I'll call to, I call to you, ah, I'll call to order this May ninth, twenty twenty-three, Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We can start with the meeting minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Motion approved, Commissioner Francis.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bremen. Commissioner Francis.
I read them. Seems perfect.
Commissioner Bremen.
Same.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. Commissioner Braun.
Pass me the minutes.
Minutes. C seven hands, pass this unanimously. Old business. Zoning Regulation Amendment, Application of Post-Road Residential Inc. to amend section thirteen point fourteen, the Transit Oriented Development Park. This is a continued, ah, from our, from two previous. I think we'll skip the staff, um, report because it's been given already. Ah, we'll get a motion on the table. Should we have any questions? You can obviously ask staff, but I think that's probably the easiest thing at this point. Motion, Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve, ah, in accordance with the recommendation of staff, ah, the various changes, ah, involved and light gray deletions.
Okay. It's kind of like where we were at the end of last meeting?
Right.
The same motion that we had it before we tabled everything?
Exactly.
That's why, that's my recollection, at least. Um, Mr. Wentz, does that sound accurate? The motion on the table is what we've?
Well, yeah, I have, ah, I printed it. If, if anybody needs a hard copy, I have it. Um, it's, it's red.
All right.
For those that printed it in black and white, it's light gray, but it's really red.
Okay.
So take one and pass it down.
But that's what you're, the motion is what's going to be passed out, what was circulated and what we've kind of, as we said, as I said, where we left off at the last meeting before we tabled.
That's correct.
Okay.
Reflected in the, ah.
Perfect.
What's being passed out.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Um, thank you. So the motion is, as I stated, where we left off as incorporate, as demonstrated or illustrated by the, um, document that was sent out to us, ah, by staff, which we, again, is kind of where we left off the last hearing. So, we spent a lot of time with, ah, going through it, ah, point by point. Um, Commissioner Levy, why don't you start us off?
Yeah, I don't think we need to go through, I mean, by my count, um, it's roughly, ah, ten changes, ah, to the, ah, basically section three point, ah, one four, and we went through them at length last time. So I think really the question is, does it, ah, you know, meet our standards for consideration for regulation amendment? And in my opinion, they certainly do. Um, versus it consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, ah, look back both at the two thousand sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development, as well as the two thousand and nineteen T O D study. And, um, you know, particularly turning to page sixty-six of the Conservation Development, you know, there is a, ah, you know, a projected, ah, you know, or desire, expressed desire to see more mixed use in the transit oriented neighborhood, ah, more residential, ah, use, a wider range of retail and, ah, dining options, ah, to make it a more compact residential development and provide greater housing options in the T O D area for college grads, professionals, workforce, empty nesters. And also, it, ah, is consistent with our goal to increase the, ah, number of affordable units, where it increases the number from ten percent to twelve percent. Ah, you know, the primary changes are of course, ah, to allow, ah, you know, for the, ah, the five, increase the height and the density in the area, ah, consistent with the T O D study. Um, does it meet the time and experience and responsible planning for contemporary conditions reasonably in the keep the need for proposed amendment? I think that's exactly what our T O D study said, that this is what we need, particularly in this area around the Ash Creek area, which, ah, has a long history of being for industrial use and is to have vacant, ah, for many years. Um, and, you know, it's, this is all largely reflective of those proposed changes. Ah, is it warranted? Will it serve the general health and welfare of the town? Ah, yes, I mean, particularly such things as the shared workplace areas, um, they focus more on the residential as opposed to office, um, you know, development, which post-COVID, ah, there's been a substantial change in the need for commercial office space. And, ah, again, gone from the seventy to eighty percent is consistent with that. Um, will it promote a level of development that would serve to protect property values and enhance the community character and accomplish a transition in character? Ah, well, it's basically in a designated area, and I don't know that there's much transition there. It's consistent with, ah, the developments in the T O D area, the metro area. Ah, and I think it's no brainer to say that it will certainly enhance, ah, the condition of the property. And, ah, would it, the proposed amendment for a middle level of development that would increase undue traffic congestion? Ah, I think the indications are that it'll actually decrease it, ah, because most of these units will be within walking distance of the train station. Um, there will be greater, you know, dining and retail opportunities there, which will not require that you hop into your car. So based on those six factors, I think it does meet the standard for, ah, our approving this regulation amendment.
Thank you. I remember last time, the two ma, the two disputes that kind of arose was affordable housing and the heights. Right now, the affordable housing is still at twelve percent, which is the T O D recommendation, and the height's at seventy, which is the T O D recommendation. We're still, and I assume it's consistent with, that you're okay with those recommendations from the T O D being incorporated?
Yeah, the twelve percent and the eighty percent, ah, is consistent. Ah, the seventy, I mean, we, we did go back and forth between sixty-five and seventy. Um, either one would allow for basically fifteen foot as required on the first floor, and then at least five, ten foot stories above plus a little extra. Um, and the, I think the advantage of maybe the seventy, because you're still going to only have five floors, that is the limit, ah, the seventy will allow for some more, you know, architectural enhancements in terms of the roof line and anything that might break up the, you know, the facade of a five story building. Actually, the extra five feet may allow for, ah, greater architectural, um, you know, creativity.
Yeah.
So I would, I would go with the seventy at this point.
No, thank you. It's just, that's my recollection of this, specific disputes that we had, so I thought it was worth teeing up. Commissioner Bremen?
Thank you. I, I don't have much to add to those well articulated comments from Commissioner Levy. I would say that, um, as, um, certainly as amended by staff through their, you know, their thoughtful consideration and as, as we discussed extensively at our last meeting, the regulations that we have in front of us, ah, tonight, the regulation amendment, is consistent, um, not only with the Plan of Conservation and Development and the well-thought-out and, ah, you know, um, extensive, ah, twenty nineteen, a T O D study, which is even more relevant now, that there's even more demand for transit oriented development, um, particularly in the central metro area. Ah, it's consistent with the Transit Oriented Development Park regulations themselves and in, and further enhances our ability to achieve the purpose of those, ah, regulations, of that, that overlay zone, which is, um, is stated as, ah, to enable the development of a transit supportive mixed use ne, ah, neighborhood within walking distance of commuter rail transit, of a scale and design that is appropriate to the existing neighborhood context. So I, I think that the regulation amendment that's proposed, as, as edited by staff, really serves that purpose. And, ah, the, the amended regulation will, ah, allow us to attract, ah, a type and a level of, ah, development and density that is appropriate to this, um, particular, ah, area of town where we do, ah, need more transit oriented development, and we've been trying to encourage transit oriented development through all the different levels at our disposal. In terms of the, ah, you know, percentage of affordable housing, the T O D study did, um, market research about what the market, ah, would support and what, ah, was economically feasible and settled on, ah, twelve percent, um, through that, you know, the considered judgment of the consultants. And that was, that was adopted by the, um, not only our, our commission, but the Economic Development Commission, as what was, um, the, the, the right goal. Ah, and in terms of the height, ah, you know, while the, the applicant, ah, here suggested that perhaps they'd be able to live with something short of seventy feet, um, we, we don't necessarily, ah, we are, are not necessarily bound by that applicant and what they could live with, and the, the T O D study recommended that, um, for this, um, for the, the purpose of enhancing our ability to attract the type of development we want i- in this part of town, we should go to seventy feet. So I'm, I'm comfortable with seventy feet.
Thank you. We'll start, um, start all the way at the end and work our way down, if that's okay. Commissioner Braun?
Ah, yes. So the figure referred to in Appendix C, is that, um, is that the figure we've been looking at? It outlines the red of the, the, um, retail edge and all that from the T O D study? Because that's the only figure I, I can find that we're looking at. Is, is it the map of the area?
Yes.
It is.
So my understanding from our last conversation was that the area of the whole regulation would be limited to Ash Creek Boulevard, not just the latter half of the density and lot area regulations. And so I guess I have a couple of follow-up questions about that?
Sure.
Before I get to my climate change question. Number one, what, what properties will be affected? Because Ash Creek Boulevard, to my knowledge, only has Metro Center property at two nineteen Ash Creek Boulevard. I'm not aware of any other properties on Ash Creek Boulevard. Can you verify that? What is on Ash Creek Boulevard?
Well, if, if we start, it, it's east boundary at Black Rock Turnpike, it's got the, the corner parcel where the.
I'm having trouble hearing. Could you speak up a little bit?
Sure.
My other microphone. We need like a few.
So starting, um, I highlighted in orange, Ash Creek Boulevard. So starting to the right at the intersection of Black Rock Turnpike and Ash Creek Boulevard, we have the parcel for which the illicit brewery was recently, um, approved. The next parcel in is the subject parcel that we're talking about here, eighty-one. The, the Metro Center parcels are not impacted by this proposal because they're governed by section twenty-one of the regulations. And as we heard with the fairly recent, um, pre-app for the new visioning of that development, they're, they're likely going to come in with their own set of regulation amendments impacting the Metro Center properties. So these proposed amendments do not impact the two Metro Center parcels. And then you go over the bridge, and then on the right-hand side, ah, there's a development that's already built, Alto, on the right-hand side, and then there's a vacant parcel, ah, on the left-hand side at the corner of Ash Creek Boulevard and King's Highway. But to the first part of your question, the, the, the locational restriction, ah, was only discussed in context with the proposal where we were talking about, um, the application includes allowing some flexibility in what the commission can consider to be credited towards non-residential occupancy in those, ah, then the, and the geography that was offered for that was, as, as it's articulated in our plan, for properties that are not located on that retail priority edge, which are the brighter red highlighted parcels. But, but so, so let me, so when that discussion came up about that particular, um, element, we suggested that initially, that if you were concerned about accrediting the public open space and some of the things that, the amenities that they're offering here, um, to be counted towards non-residential, we suggested that you might consider limiting that initially to the properties in front of Ash Creek Boulevard. The balance of the proposals were not, are, would only be within the T O D area.
So, okay, so Ash Creek Boulevard goes, um, basically across from the, where the theater used to be?
Yeah.
Along Ash Creek and then circles up and ends up kind of across from Whole Foods on King's Highway. So the only two parcels, well, I'm just trying to envision where it goes, and does cross over the train track.
Right, it ends at opposite Stone Ridge condominiums.
Oh, Stone Ridge, I'm sorry, not King's Highway, yeah.
Right.
Stone Ridge, yeah. So there's only two parcels, because, ah, Federal Metro Center, which has an Ash Creek address, would not be governed by this, but two other parcels would. And then eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike is the reason we're considering this, because they're the ones who proposed this to help the development go through. But they don't have an Ash Creek address. So how would they, would they be governed by this if they don't have an Ash Creek address?
Well, they will. I, I, I assume that that, the, the historical address is eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike dates back to before Ash Creek Boulevard was constructed. So when this parcel ultimately gets developed, it will ultimately have an Ash Creek Boulevard address, because it has no frontage on Black Rock Turnpike.
I don't even see any, any access or access point on Black Rock Turnpike.
It doesn't. It was all part of the Greater Bullard Machine Tool Company that owned both sides of that Black Rock Turnpike. So it's been subdivided since then. It has easements through the other parcel, ah, but since the construction of Ash Creek Boulevard, that's where its frontage is. It will ultimately have an Ash Creek Boulevard address.
So if we pass the regulation now and it only governs Ash Creek Boulevard, they would have to change their address before they apply for a special permit?
Well, that, the addresses just get assigned by the engineering department. It's, it's the way that the regulation reads is for parcels that, ah, A, are not within the retail priority edge and on Ash Creek Boulevard. So th, this property qualifies on both counts.
Okay. Um, so my, I guess there's only basically, I guess, three parcels that would be governed by that, um, section, where you don't have to have any retail at all, even twenty percent, um, if you are in a non-retail edge area, which those, would those, all three of those parcels qualify for that exemption from having to have twenty percent retail or commercial or just this one?
Well, that, that's at the commission's discretion. The, the, the T O D overlay, as I, and on the subsequent versions of that map, tried to highlight the applicability. There are.
It's hard to tell from the map because it's not.
Yeah, if you can, if you can put that up, if you can toggle back and forth. But again, keep in mind, the T O D, the Transit Oriented Development Park is an overlay that, and an applicant has to apply to this commission for it to be considered an eligible parcel. Because it's within that greater black, thick black boundary, doesn't automatically make it a Transit Oriented Development Park parcel. Those just identify the area that we've said, these are the eligible places where you can make such an application. But the regulations require that the applicant make a qualif, ah, as part of the application, a request is commissioned for you to qualify it for that overlay. So, so the overlay has to first be approved as part of the overall development. So this, so the, the greater, the outer black boundary is the, where our T O D study has identified, because it was shown in, is a white dash line on that map, and it's hard to see, so I outlined it in black, ah, as the T O D park overlay eligible parcels. Ah, if you go to the next, so those, there's a crosshatched pieces there show the Metro Center parcels, which will, are not governed by this proposal. Um, the next slide, those parcels that are crosshatched are the two sites that thus far have qualified as T O D development park sites and have been already developed.
What is that trademark and Alto?
That's Trademark and Alto are the two sites that are already developed under the T O D park regulations.
And they have retail at the lower level, right?
They do, and they're both on a, they're, and both, the, the, those frontages are identified in this plan as being retail priority edges and wouldn't be exempted under this proposal. There was, if, if, there was some concern expressed about the, the broader potential applicability, that's why we suggested it be limited to Ash Creek Boulevard, but it doesn't have to be. The application, the applicant didn't suggest that. We suggested that after we thought there was some concern that it might be, that we should do this incrementally with respect to the flexibility of what can and can't count towards non-commercial.
So in the broader area outlined, in the broader black area that kind of looks like a backward C up there?
Yeah.
There would also be a reduced requirement for, um, or, I'm sorry, the area size included in calculating the twenty percent commercial would omit a bunch of common areas such as amenities, mechanical, ground floor, residential access, circulation, lobbies, and elevators. So that re, in, in the whole broader area of the whole black outlined area, not just Ash Creek, we would be reducing basically the size from which you would designate twenty percent as commercial. So that's my concern, that there's a very large area here where the commercial could be of a much smaller starting point. In other words, if you fill up the whole ground floor with amenities and things like that, that, there, it could be potentially very little or no commercial in anything developed in that whole black outlined area. That was what my concern was. Um, the part that we're restricting to just Ash Creek would be simply having nothing considered commercial at all, if, if there's some kind of public open space, um, because they're not on the.
Retail priority.
Retail area. But areas that are in the retail area would also not have to have as much commercial as we require now in our T O D, in our, um, regulations. If they have all kinds of amenities, elevators, lobbies, et cetera, on the ground floor, right?
Right, it, it's really kind of a net calculation versus a gross count.
Right, you're taking twice some of the smaller amounts.
Right. But, but again, that's not language that this applicant created, that's a recommendation that's found in our T O D study, is to consider creating some flexibility at the commission's discretion to allow some of those areas to, to, to count to that. But again, it's not, that larger polygon, if you will, um, is not automatically approved for a T O D park. That's still at the commission's discretion as to whether such a designation should apply to any particular development proposal.
So if we pass this text amendment, we would still have very broad discretion to say, we think you need more commercial, even though you have elevators and lobbies and everything on this floor, we would request, we would require more?
Yeah, again, going back to what I tried to articulate the last meeting, it's, I think, in what the study concludes, is that if we look at this holistically as a broader district, as it develops over time, we will likely exceed that twenty percent commercial ratio, but there are sites on which individually, you're not going to achieve that. But if you step back and look at, as it collectively, we're, we're far greater than twenty percent or thirty percent presently on what's being developed on a percentage basis, if you count Alto, trademark, and what I tried to say on, last time, is, you know, the property next door, while not designated T O D park because it was a permitted use, that's a hundred percent commercial occupancy. Ah, and, and so if you look at all of the square footage as a whole within the district, we're likely going to have a commercial percentage greater than twenty percent. You just might get, not get it on every single parcel, but some parcels will have a much greater percentage of commercial to, to balance that out.
And just so I understand, this parcel that this regulation was applied on behalf of is set back from the red retail area, which is on the corner of Black Rock Turnpike and Ash Creek Boulevard, and extends all the way to the train tracks, right?
Correct.
Behind Planet Fitness?
Correct.
Which is where we approved the, um.
Illicit brewery.
The, the beer hall, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Do we, do, do we approve another one along that area, or is that just the only one we approved so far?
Another what?
Um, the brewery is.
No, that's.
That's it.
That's the only.
Okay, I thought so.
Brewery.
And the parking lot, do we have any idea who owns that? That's not part of this or part of the, or is that part of the brewery property?
The parking lot, that's.
That's on the corner of Ash Creek Boulevard?
That belongs to the brewery parcel.
Okay, so that was part of that development?
Correct.
Okay. Then I, I had, um, some, I had some questions, um, for Ms. Harrigan about the climate change information that you provided us. I was wondering, um, would you be able to go through your fifty-page report a little bit to explain some of the technical details? I don't know if I can turn this mic on or if.
Here, I can bring it in.
Does this work? Okay, there we go. This is Emily Harrigan, I'm the existing planning director and the flood control administrator And I apologize, I realized I missed a little portion of the area just north of the highway in this diagram. Um, but Commissioner Braun had asked us to look at the flooding issues for the site, as well as future climate change issues, um, specific to the Rooster River, and also, um, potential storm surge off of Ash Creek. So I compiled a memo, um, and identified where we have existing flooding issues, which is primarily along the Ash Creek to the south, and then some Rooster River overflow on the eastern edge of the Commerce Drive area, and then also just south of ninety-five along Wester Street and Fifth Street. Specific to the proposed zoning regulation change, the area along Ash Creek is subject to tidal flowing, flooding, as shown on the format map here. One of the things that happened in conjunction to cleaning up the prior industrial site was, um, a requirement by the Conservation Department to, oh, actually, let me back up, sorry. So for the flooding that occurs in the Rooster River, ah, most of that is constrained by a couple of choke points, one of which is I ninety-five, um, then also, um, the train tracks, Commerce Drive, and then Black Rock Turnpike. One of the things that our engineering department is looking at, as provided in the memo, was upstream detention areas that would alleviate some of the downstream flooding. And so I provided that as an exhibit, um, as part of the material. And the, the town did hire a consultant to study that whole entire watershed, because we, we are experiencing, um, higher, ah, stormwater events based on, um, higher rainfall events, based on number of inches in a shorter time period. So we've been getting, for example, four inch rainstorms in two and a half hours. And our stormwater system's not designed to accommodate that level of, um, stormwater within our stormwater system. So engineering is looking at upstream solutions in order to draw off some of that rainfall before it hits some of these more channelized environments that can't handle that capacity. So that's just what that, this diagram shows. So as part of the train station construction, our Conservation Department, um, back in two thousand and six, required, um, some wetland mitigation, a, a large conservation easement that runs along the southern part, part of the site and extends almost to, um, the front of this parcel at eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike, um, and required that there be a room created with a conservation path, like a walking path. So what I provided in the packet was the approval from the D E P, that generally shows that approval and where it's located. Um, what that approval essentially did in construction with Ash Creek Boulevard and the conservation path is it regraded the site significantly along the southern edge, which, um, changed the floodma, the flooding condition, although at the time that the draft. Although at the time that the draft map was provided to us by DEP in 2010 and then adopted by the town in July in 2013, this correction was not made to the flood mapping at the time that the train station was constructed. So what the prior applicant at the Metro Crossing site did was they submitted a letter of map revision due to the fill that was conducted on site in conjunction with a remediation and the conservation department required.
Is it possible to blow that up at all?
It's on the very last, just go to the very last page, I think.
I'm going to go to this map, actually.
Yeah, there you go.
So this map shows, I'll zoom in a little bit. This map shows the wetland mitigation area, so the freshwater pond that was created in the back, the frackish area that feeds into this little pond in the back as well, and then this whole entire berm that was created along the edge of the property. And so what the consultant for the prior developer did is they showed where the flood zone line used to be, which includes some of this pinkish area on the map, and where the flood zone line is now based on the regrading that occurred as part of the conservation department requirements. So there's huge chunks of the flood zone that were removed, reviewed by FEMA, and the flood map is now revised per this letter of map revision. It doesn't revise the map that we see within our GIS mapping, but when they do the next remap, whenever that occurs, it will reflect these revised conditions.
Where is the flood area before and now? Is it possible to point that out? I couldn't see where the cursor was going.
Let me back out.
But the darker line that meanders around is the FEMA map identified flood boundary. The area that's shaded in pink is the area that's been removed from that.
By removed, you mean raised?
Correct. Correct. Because the grades are sufficiently high now that it's been removed from the, from the hundred year flood plain.
And that's. The flood zone height is elevation 10 and the top of the berm is elevation 20. So it's a significant difference in grade. So to follow the question about and concern about climate change, circa the Connecticut, or the Connecticut Institute for Resiliency and Climate Adaptation, this house at UConn, they have projected specific sea level rise increases by 20, 30 of 20 inches. So because the top of that berm varies from elevation 20 to the closest area that's in front of 81 Black Rock Turnpike, that's about elevation 14, it's not anticipated that climate change will have much impact to these sites along Ash Creek.
The site we're talking about is 81 Black Rock Turnpike. Do we know what, is that at the same elevation as the Metro Center site was raised to?
If you look at this map, I'm going to try to use the cursor, I don't know.
See, I thought when Metro Center was approved, that whole open space area was going to have like a kayak launch, so that would be at water level, wouldn't it?
No, the conservation path was a big berm that was required to encapsulate, I believe, some of the environmental cleanup. And so they knew that Ash Creek was going to be at a higher elevation, so the berm feeds into that roadway elevation.
So the whole open space area is at a higher elevation, you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
And how does it, it goes down very steeply then to Ash Creek, obviously? You can sort of see the contours?
Yes, it does.
And that's not open to the public, walking down to Ash Creek, I guess, down the slope to shore line?
I don't believe that it's restricted.
And as far as 81, because the maps I looked at from STOCOS, it looks like 81 is subject to inundation with floodwaters, at least at its elevation now. Is that going to be built up to a higher elevation or?
So STOCOS was using the existing FEMA flood map and probably those digital files. So when we do a letter of map revision or a letter of map amendment, there's a paper file that gets sent to the town, but the maps are not revised. So as the floodplain administration repository, we have all the information on those sites and they're also available on FEMA's map service center website, but it's, they don't revise all of the maps because it's a very expensive endeavor and letters of map amendments and letters of map revision occur countrywide.
So what's the conclusion? 81 Black Rock Turnpike is not going to be subject to inundation?
No, it will not because as you can see, so if you're following the edge of this berm that extends all the way to in front of the 81 Black Rock Turnpike site, that berm also restricts overland water flow to that site.
Overland's coming from which direction?
From Ash Creek.
And water comes down from upper Rooster River as well, so that was my concern as well. That this site is sort of getting the squeeze on it from both directions, from sea level rise as well as from the Rooster River watershed, you know, which has its share of, you know, many, many problems that have not been resolved yet.
I can take it, if I might jump in for a second. On that question, what's not shown in that format, if you go farther north, if you look at the flood map, the Rooster River flooding primarily is a backwater issue, meaning that all this water's coming down Rooster River from Trumbull and Bridgeport and Fairfield and then it hits the I-95 underpass and there's not enough capacity for that water to get through, so it backs up. So that's why all that flooding on Fairchild Avenue and the old Miller Volkswagen site and those areas, it's because there's not enough capacity in the I-95 and the railroad underpass that acts as like a detention basin almost, that those pipes aren't large enough to take the peak flows underneath the turnpike, so it backs up north of the turnpike. South of the turnpike, that flow is kind of metered out by the capacity of those pipes. So it's not, it's, the majority of the Rooster River flooding is north of 95 because that water comes down with limited detention and then hits that choke point and then backs up. So this site is south of that in, it's, in the, if you can see on the floodway, it's kind of correct, the Black Rock Turnpike Bridge is like the terminus of what FEMA defines as the floodway because south to the left-hand side of Black Rock Turnpike is titled influence, not necessarily riverine influenced flooding.
Okay, so just, my concern is that we're adding huge amounts of density and when I looked at the TOD plan, which is not in our regulations, but is guidance, it seemed as though they were indicating we should be adding almost a million square feet of new development down in the Ash Creek area, just from one of the scenarios that I saw in the plan. And is that still what we're aiming for and is this how we get there? In other words, are we concerned that we're putting too many people down in the inundation area in general? That's my concern. I don't know how you can really predict sea level rise or climate change, but this just seems like it's being affected from the top and the bottom. And I have a concern over, you know, I know that we're modifying our P O C D right now and that will accommodate whatever the TOD guidance is, but the TOD guidance is already several years old and climate change information comes out all the time. So that's one of my concerns. And the other concern is the citification of our town. We haven't seen public feedback in this public hearing, negative or positive, okay? But I have heard from many, many people that they're very disenchanted with just the citification of our town. And I don't know if we need to accommodate that in our P O C D or in every time we go to change our regulations to sort of liberalize them to allow a whole lot more development than what's allowed under our current regulations. But we've been able to build Trademark 1, Trademark 2, and Alta, Stone Bridge, Metro Center, all those are approved, some are built under the current regulations. So I have qualms about further expanding them without sort of relooking at the TOD. I mean, can they update it? Can the consultants that did it?
Well, we're, I just, the only thing I'll say to that is the TOD study included pretty broad and robust public participation in the formulation of the guidance.
I know, we're going down.
So, yeah, that's all, I'm, I'm.
Okay, well, that's just.
And that's fine, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
That's my concern.
And that's fine, that's a fair concern. I'm not looking to change your point of view, that's, you're entitled, you're entitled to it. I just want to assure you that the recommendations came out of a planning process that included a pretty broad public participation element. That's really the only thing I wanted to say.
Okay.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I, you know, thank you and thank you, Ms. Harrigan, for going through that and thank you for coming together. Sounds very helpful and very technical for someone who's not very technical. You know, we have broad discretion here when we try to adopt the, you know, developer's text amendment, basically that's what it is. And I actually, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Braun makes. You know, I think this, I reviewed the TOD study a few times this week and I find it just incredibly out of date. Just some of the things that I noted that I think have just changed radically since 2019. I mean, COVID happened, that impacted our workplaces, you know, how we do a number of things, just a few things I think are out of date in this, you know, state-generated traffic, you know, it gives a nod to resiliency and sustainability on page 38, a number, you know, average households, the potential to move to TOD, you know, does TOD what we need? I like TOD, but a lot of our behaviors have changed. People go to the city maybe twice a week. My company's in the city, most of us walk from home most of the week. I think behaviors have changed and a lot of these applicants are, you know, taking guidance from this document, which I think really has to evolve. So what would it take to have board and plan say to evolve it so it meets 2023 and everything that we've gone through in the last few years? So I think there have been substantive changes.
Well, I don't know how to respond to that other than that study was done through an economic development grant. It was a $350,000 effort over the course of 18 months. There's no doubt things have changed, but I think what's changed is the demand for a greater percentage of residential occupancy versus commercial is what I think we're, is we've seen going back to 2005 when the Metro Center development was originally conceived with the anticipation of the Metro Center Railroad was completely office. Now, obviously, that marketplace has changed to the point where there isn't demand for that and it's now evolving into a more, higher percentage of residential. And I think with the types of amenities that we're likely to see is, as you're right, COVID certainly has had an impact. There are fewer, the demand for large-scale office space isn't there right now. But I think that's reflective in, that marketplace had already been in existence prior to COVID. So I think the market study that was done as part of this, was dubbed in 2019, I wouldn't classify it as being out of date personally, but what it would take to update that would be another 18-month plan in another $350,000 grant that we don't have.
Well, I think, you know, good planning is important, you know, I don't think a dollar amount on that.
No, I don't disagree, but I would not agree and again, I'm not, it's my personal opinion, I don't think that the 2019 report that we're now seeking to implement is necessarily out of date.
Just one more point, and also, you know, we have the 12% for affordable housing, inclusionary housing. You know, we, you know, many commissioners cite housing crises and, you know, the need to, I think, build, I think, I see numbers of like 120 units across Connecticut, 120,000, maybe even more. So I don't know why we wouldn't think about that too. If we need to increase our affordable housing numbers, why wouldn't we want to increase it in our TOD as well? Because perhaps that, those numbers have changed as well. But just food for thought, I would like to have continued conversation. Again, we have very broad discretion on this and we have a very big, heavy burden of responsibility when we change a regulation. You know, we've made recent, you know, regulation changes with the ADUs and dining and that took a long time and those are just minor, you know, tweaks, I think. And then I just had one more question, I think you may have answered it with Commissioner Braun's vote. Do you think this regulation amendment would make, would incentivize commercial or erode any commercial development in this area?
I don't, excuse me, because the plan recognizes that not every site is going to be a key retail location. And those that are, I think we want to hold fast to requiring that ground floor retail presence. And those that aren't, you know, the plan speaks to allowing some flexibility to give you the discretion to determine whether or not what's being proposed is appropriate. But I'll go back to what I said before and I think really the emphasis that this plan is trying to articulate is to not look at this area on an every single parcel-by-parcel basis, but holistically as it develops over time, we will achieve those objectives in the long term as parcels develop to get the right mix of commercial and residential. It just may not happen individually on every single parcel.
Great, sorry, thank you. So I would just add, I'm not going to be a dead horse, but everyone's very patient tonight, you know, I think just having a few paragraphs on sustainability and resiliency and TOD is not good there. I think as Commissioner Braun said, you know, things evolve, especially with this climate change, it's real, it's here, and we're all feeling the effects of it and I think we need to have more than a few paragraphs, especially in an area that flooded with Rooster River and Long Island Town. I will pass it along.
Just, just because I'm not, I didn't follow you on that last part, what was, what are you talking about with only a few paragraphs?
On page, on page 38 of the TOD study, I believe.
Oh, the TOD study, okay, thank you. No, I just, I thought you were talking the right.
I know, got a little lost.
No, no, I just, I wasn't following you. Thank you. I'll keep going to my left if any commissioners have comments. Commissioner Francis?
I agree with Commissioner Harrison's comment that, you know, we should remember the.
Jim, Mr. White, can I borrow that microphone, please?
My fault, I'm hardworking. This data was, the study was developed in 17 and 18, so it is a little bit, and things have changed so much with COVID. I think developers are going to find that people are going to want larger apartments. Now, now that the state has said there's no minimum, that, I think they're going to find that because the more people are working from home, they all want the second, the extra bedroom to be at their office. And I think people are going to want condos as they go towards more city living and not just apartments. But one question, could you remind me what we meant by easement for vehicles in 13, 14.1? It wasn't streets.
Correct. We took out the street or highway because there is, the definition of lot area in the regulations nets out of the lottery calculation easements for vehicles. What they're asking you to do in this case is not net that out because those can provide access to adjoining commercial uses and maybe have some benefit. We don't anticipate that being a street or a highway, so that's why we suggested eliminating those words. But for the calculation of lot area, what other easements that would be netted out that have cross easements for adjacent parcels could count.
Okay, you said lot area and shape includes vehicles.
Correct, because under the, if you look in section 31, under the definition of lot area, they're specifically excluded. So for the purposes of this section, they're asking it be included.
All right, thank you. And should this be clarified, 13, 14, 10, the front setback area is occupied by public open space or an easement? The setback requirement should commence from the edge of said public open space. Is that the front edge or the interior edge or should we?
It would be, it would be the interior edge.
Okay. I think that should be clarified. All right, that's all, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harrigan.
Commissioner Ford?
Excellent presentation.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Commissioner Levy or Bremen? Commissioner Levy or Bremen?
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, as I said the last hearing, I'm supportive of these, of these regulation amendments, um, as they stand. We spent a lot of time with our TOD study report, and I have yet to see any reason why it is, it's out of date. Um, TOD developments seem to be, there seems to be a market for them. We have an applicant who's taking what would otherwise be, what I had thought, a derelict site that we, that was going to remain a derelict site, and is utilizing the TOD report and the conclusions derived therefrom to put a building, a building there that will only help Fairfield. And while our regulation amendments are not site-specific, we have been, I think wisely, limiting it to a, to a specific area so that we can be allowed to see the impact and therefore, and potentially expand it incrementally. I think it's a wise planning move. Uh, but I'm not going to ignore the fact that we have an applicant who's in the marketplace telling us that this is something, the TOD report, uh, and the conclusions derived from it have market applicability. They're going to utilize it to develop, like I said, would otherwise be a derelict spot. And I don't know, beside, you know, general references to COVID and site traffic, how the TOD report is out of date. I, I, I agree, I think it's still in date. I just think the, it's the flexibility derived from it, uh, with residential versus commercial, and, and all the, the changes we're going to make are being recommended.
I'm sorry, but, um, your audio is kind of off, just a second.
Just tell me one.
I can hear you.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I, I still rely upon the TOD report, and I don't know, I mean, Commissioner Harrison has asked, you know, what can be done to update it? I think the simple answer is retaining some, retaining the consultant and spending another year and a half to two years, which I'm not sure how fruitful that is, and what kind of a good signal that sends to developers in the area, that they have to, now we have to wait an extra two years, and who knows if that, what changes happen between then? But I mean, I think we have a developer who show, who's telling us that the marketplace, um, favors these regulation amendments, um, which is what we had the TOD, which is what the TOD report was made for. Um, twelve percent affordable housing, yeah, I would love it to be higher. Um, but we have a report examining the finances, um, we're, uh, we're, and examining the area who's saying twelve percent makes sense, and construction costs have only gone up since two twenty nineteen, so even then, um, I don't know, going higher, I don't think makes any, makes any feasible sense based on the TOD report. So for all those reasons, I agree with Commissioner Levy and Commissioner Bremen's, uh, going through the factors, um, and I would support the motion to approve that's on the table. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I just want to be very clear, and, um, that I appreciate visionary developers and their risk-taking, and, you know, and obviously maximizing, you know, that, that area, and I'm glad it's going to potentially, you know, not be derelict in your words anymore. So I just want to be very clear on that, Mr. Chairman, because it sounds like maybe my comments are taken out of context, perhaps, um, and we'll have to disagree, agree or disagree on the TOD study. I think, I, I live in a world where COVID has impacted a lot of things, and I, I don't think the TOD study reflects twenty twenty-three, but we'll, we'll disagree.
No, it's fine. Should you provide any specifics, I think we'd be happy to review that.
Yeah, I went through several.
So, any other comments? Or can we put this to a vote? Oh, Commissioner Braun, thank you.
Um, just a few more comments I have. Um, I don't consider it a derelict spot, that's just me. I, when I drove by there, it looks like green space to me. I know it's probably contaminated, but it could be natural flood plain, so I don't consider it derelict at all to allow some natural green space to remain. But I also understand the developer wants to maximize development potential of the property, but, but we're under no obligation to pass a regulation to help one developer. This is spot zoning, as far as I'm concerned, although the footprint of this zone extends from Grassmere, Canard Street, to King's Highway, or Connecticut Turnpike, beyond King's Highway, across Connecticut Turnpike to, um, where the Lard Building is, Castle Ave, it looks like. And, um, it, it looks like it also includes where BJ's is, and it goes down to Ash Creek on the other side. So this, you know, once we pass this regulation, I envision seventy-foot-tall buildings dotting that whole area with not much commercial. I don't know what will happen, no one, no one knows, but we're under no obligation, we're wearing, we have extremely broad discretion. Once we pass the regulation, our discretion gets less, because then we're bound by the same regulations we passed. That's my concern. We're allowing extreme higher density in that whole broad area, and we're, we're allowing less commercial than twenty percent of those areas, because they can carve out a lot of areas, you know, you reduce the pie, the twenty percent of the pie is smaller also. Um, and then as far as climate change, the TOD study barely mentions it, and I, I appreciate everyone's comments and everyone's reports and staff's, um, expertise, but, um, things have changed. I've read reports that our, our modeling of climate change could be so deficient, we could be burning ourselves by as much as two-hundred percent. You know, sea level rise could be, instead of twenty inches, it could be three times that, because things are melting faster than we predict, and we can't always predict what happens with climate change. So I see this parcel and this part on Ash Creek as, again, having the squeeze put on it from both above with Rooster River watershed, as well as below with the rising sea level. So, um, I would, I would, I, I think we should ask the TOD consultants to update their study with, um, current modeling for both climate change, as well as resiliency planning, which is not in it, as well as post-pandemic demographics and everything else like that. And I, I don't feel comfortable passing a regulation, um, without having that information. And we, we have regulations that have allowed a huge amount of density and high-rise apartment buildings all through the area, and that will continue. I don't think it's necessary to do this. I have not seen financials from this developer or any developer saying, if you don't do this, we won't build. I don't know. But I, I don't feel comfortable passing a regulation that could, um, commit us to a broad area like this.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? And I'm not going to go through a rebuttal, I think, rec, I'm not going to, I think the record is what it is at this point, um, I just don't, you know, what else more that I can add at this point. So, can we put this to a vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand. See five hands, all oppose. Commissioner Braun and Harrison, votes are passes, five-two. Next item is twelve eighty Stratfield Road, special exception application of Andale Third LLC, ZBA, the Goddard School, for an interior expansion into an existing second floor, currently used for storage in the neighborhood design district slash residential aid. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Goddard School has operated the daycare facility in the former Stratfield IGA since twenty twenty. Uh, the application proposes to establish two classrooms in the existing partial second floor, an existing second floor, I'm sorry, an existing ground floor classroom is proposed to be repurposed for a staff room and indoor play area. Therefore, the proposal will result in one net additional classroom. The new enrollment increase is anticipated to be twenty students. There are thirty-two existing parking spaces in the, the applicant did provide a sample parking study counts over various states, indicating that they feel that they have adequate capacity for those additional twenty students. This is a special exception application, and the standard conditions include, I'm sorry, the standard considerations include, is the location type, character, and size are used to buildings in harmony with and in form to the appropriate early development of town and neighborhood, and not hinder or discourage use of adjacent property or impair its value. Two, is the nature and location of the use of buildings such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three, are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry prospective traffic without due traffic adjustment? And four, is the proposal in compliance with the plan of conservation and development. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman, pending any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion? Commissioner Francis?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Commissioner Francis, second, from Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Francis?
I feel this is an excellent application. It will not increase the footprint or size of the building at all. The traffic flow, which was fine, has been corrected even more to address it. It's certainly a heavily-used business, really appreciated, especially in that section of town. And lastly, it has the support of the neighbors, which is something we don't always get.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. I would, I think Commissioner Francis said it well, it's, you know, good to see it, this is growing and thriving in this area of town. Um, it's a pretty modest, you know, addition, to undertake, good to see the neighbors on board, so I, I wish the company success. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission? Pretty straightforward application. Put it to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. One eighty-six, two twelve, Hillside Road, special permit application of Marsh Real Estate LLC pertaining to a second floor addition to an existing dwelling in the neighborhood design district. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this site is the current location of Greenfield Hill Veterinary Hospital. Uh, as you know, they are constructing a new facility further down the street. Also on this site is a small residential cottage that was built in nineteen thirty-eight. This proposal seeks to add a modest second floor addition to that cottage. Since the site is in the neighborhood design district, a variance application of the ZBA was required to expand the residential use. Uh, that ZBA application was approved in March, in the file materials, which we included, uh, included a petition, a neighbor, a support petition. Considerations for a special permit are found in section twenty-five point seven point seven, as the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such character is to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values in the neighborhood, and to preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and to avoid undue traffic congestion. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Levy. Second, Commissioner Ford, second, Commissioner Levy?
Uh, they've gotten the ZBA approvals, and they need to raise the roof, so I'd approve it.
Commissioner Ford?
I, I agree. Nothing further.
Any other member of the commission wish to be heard on the item? Again, pretty straightforward, I thought it meant the, uh, what the standards for a special permit. Put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Seven hands, passes unanimously. Twelve forty-one, Post Road, zoning compliance application of Finn Restaurant for outdoor dining in the center design district. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Finn Restaurant is located in the Brickwalk Plaza. They were first approved for a small outside, uh, outdoor patio in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and twenty, that area was enclosed and provided with accordion doors as a full-time dining area. Uh, and at that time, in two thousand and twenty, they did provide additional parking for that enclosure. Under the COVID protocols, Finn received approval to provide three hundred and six square feet of outdoor dining, and they are now seeking to make that a permanent installation. Under our recently adopted regulations, the, the three hundred and six feet does not require any additional parking. There is a twelve-foot-wide alley between this and the adjacent building in the Brickwalk. In this area will occupy six and a half feet of that, leaving a clear pedestrian path of five and a half feet. Um, there were, in the materials that we sent to you, a photo, um, of that, that alleyway, but they had that up there during COVID, and there was plenty of, um, a clear path adjacent to it. So, um, I don't have any further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on the item?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Bremen moves to approve. Do we need the standard conditions?
Yeah, it, should you, I, I suggest that the, the annual recertification, no outdoor music or sign system, and no additional signage.
Does that motion?
Yes.
With conditions, standard conditions?
Yes, with standard conditions.
Thank you. May I have a second? Is there a second? Commissioner Levy, second. Commissioner Bremen?
Uh, the application complies with the regulations, and, you know, I walk by the site, and it's, it's an appropriate use of outdoor dining, in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Uh, I regularly, uh, for take of, uh, sushi at Finn, sat in this very area Friday night, and I can assure you that the five point five feet is more than adequate for creating greasy seagrass in passage.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis?
They don't use that alley at all for deliveries?
I'm sorry, for deliveries?
They don't use that alley at all for deliveries?
Oh, if they do, it's not by vehicle.
Okay.
It's pedestrian, yeah.
Last hearing, did we added, uh, conditions of approval that the, uh, the area be cordoned off? Did we do that last time?
That was, yeah, that, we had a, two applications where the, um, outdoor dining interfaced with parking and vehicular access. This is more of a pedestrian path. They do have, um, like, stanch, like canvas stretch between stanchions to designate it, but there's no vehicular pathway here that requires that protection.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously.
Just one item, Mr. Chairman, I might make a personal public service announcement. I had some minor surgery last week, so my message to you is wear sunscreen and see your dermatologist, so things can be, you know, taken care of when caught early, so be diligent about seeing your dermatologist, for those of you watching at home.
Thank you. Good luck. I am due for a visit, actually, but we will move to public hearing. The only public hearing item is two seventy-seven dash three oh one, Berkeley Road, zoning compliance application of Berkeley Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a forty-unit residential development pursuant to eight, section eight thirty G of the general statutes in a residential D zone. Good evening, Attorney Fallon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here tonight, uh, representing the applicant, Berkeley Road LLC, and as Paul indicates, it is our proposal to construct a forty-unit multifamily residential development at the property located at three oh one Berkeley Road, and the application, as I'll elaborate on, is brought, uh, in conjunction with and accordance with the Connecticut General Statute eight F thirty G. With me is Mr. Pat Rose, who you'll hear from in a moment, whose firm, Rose Tiso, handled both the site engineering and the architecture with regard to this proposal. Uh, the development will consist of eight studio units, twenty-nine one-bedroom units, and three two-bedroom units. As I said, it's submitted in accordance with the provisions of the Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Act, Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty. Uh, you note that we did, in accordance with the requirements of the statute, to submit an affordability plan. That's found at pages four through twenty-eight of your, um, handbook there that I, I made as part of this application. I also acknowledge an email, uh, from Mr. Barnhart to Mr. Went dated, uh, April twenty-five of this year. In it, he says, and I quote, "The compliance plan contains standard language and generally conforms to the state guidelines and the model plan developed by the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, there are a few minor inconsistencies in this middle that should be clarified or corrected." He then goes on to address both of those. One of them is that there is apparently some, um, confusion in terms of what we set forth in the affordability plan as the designated affordable units and what's shown on the site plan. I've already discussed that with Mr. Went, and we certainly will clarify that. It goes without saying that what we do plan is what is shown in the affordability plan. It goes without saying that what we do plan is what is shown in the affordability plan. And I think that's in accordance with Mr. Barnhart's recommendations. He also suggested, based upon, uh, recent policy of the, his office, that it would be appropriate if we designated a, a manager with regard to the property, an administrator who is someone who meets their criteria in terms of experience managing such properties, and we certainly would do that. So we, we totally concur with, uh, Mr. Barnhart's finding that the affordability plan meets the provisions of the statutes and as to the two issues he raises, we certainly will see that they are addressed. Now, to qualify, as you know, with regard to an 8-30G application, 30% of the units that are proposed, uh, have to be designated affordable under a covenant for a period of 40 years. In this case, that translates into 12 units. And in further accordance with the, the statute, six of those units will be reserved for persons earning less than 60% of the statewide median income. And those will be, in fact, the one studio unit and five one-bedroom units. In addition, six units, uh, in accordance with the statutory requirements, will be reserved by persons earning less than 80% of the statewide median income. And in this case, the allocation will be one studio unit, four one-bedroom units, and one of the two-bedroom units. Based upon our experience, both as to this developer and also my own experience with regard to numerous similar projects that we have brought before you over the last few years, we anticipate the units, both affordable and market rate, are going to be occupied by a diverse group of people, people generally over 50 and younger people, all individuals who have roots in Fairfield, wish to remain or settle in the community and make a personal and economic contributions to our town. The need for affordable housing, and let me say at the outset here, and I've said this before, I think this commission has done a very admirable job seeking to address the need for affordable housing in our community. And you've often done that during difficult circumstances because some of these cases have not been easy, and the statute is a rigorous statute relative to the requirements, as I'll elaborate on, for consideration of these applications. So I commend the commission for your diligence with regard to this. At the same time, I think the commission recognizes, the, the Affordable Housing Committee recognizes that we still have a great deal of work to do. Only approximately 3% of our housing units in Connecticut, in, in Fairfield are affordable. We still rank lowest in the percentage of 22 block grant entitlement communities. Secondly, materials submitted with this application determine the need for affordable housing going all the way back to the 1990s. And if you look at pages 49 through 78 of my material, you'll see excerpts from that. The commission, Fairfield's 22-27 Affordable Housing Plan was adopted by the Affordable Housing Committee in May of 2022, just about a year ago. And I set forth in my application the findings of that Affordable Housing Committee at pages two and three. And if you look at some of that, and I'm not going to read you pages two and three, but some of the comments, I think, are rather important. "The cost of housing continues to outpace incomes, and the number of people affected by the unaffordability of housing in Fairfield continues to grow." That's on the first page of this Affordable Housing Plan, uh, prepared by the committee. "The unaffordability of housing for people and families of modest incomes continues to grow." That's at page three. "More housing options and choices are needed to meet the changing house need, housing needs and desires of an older population, younger residents currently shut out of the housing market, current and future residents throughout their lives, smaller households seeking to downsize to meet their housing preferences. People should," and then this isn't bold, "have more housing options and choices in Fairfield in the event that they need them." That's page six of the report. According, again, I quote, "According to the Fairfield Accounting Housing Needs Assessment, RPA 2020, almost one-third of the households in Fairfield are considered, quote, 'cost burden,'" again, in, in, in underline, underscore. These are households that already live in Fairfield. That's at page seven of the report. This is Fairfield Affordable Housing Committee speaking to our community. "According, quote, 'According to the United Way Alice metric, assets limited, income constrained, employed, more than a quarter of the households in Fairfield, 28% are likely struggling with the overall cost of living.'" Again, in high italics, "These are people and families who already live in Fairfield." Page seven of the report. "There is very little housing in Fairfield which sells or rents at prices considered affordable to people earning typical wages." Page seven. And finally, "A number of other communities similar to Fairfield have more affordable housing units in Fairfield." That's at page seven of the report. So while I think we can commend ourselves as a community and commend this commission for being sensitive and aggressive with regard to affordable housing, we still have a great deal of work, of work to do in this community. And it's our strong belief that this application, in some way, helps to address that moving forward. Because, as I said, it's going to help us find a greater diversity of housing in our community, certainly for people over the age of 50, for younger people, hopefully for town employees. And so with that as the context, we turn our attention to talk about the project itself, and I'm going to call on Pat to give you the overview.
Before you get to that, just one quick question, and maybe a much longer question. Why for 60% is there not a, uh, two-bedroom?
We allocated it, uh, we, there is, we, we got, we, we determined, in our judgment, that at the 60% level, the one-bedrooms would be more in demand. But if the commission feels differently, w- we, we have no, um, axe to grind with that.
Okay.
I did discuss that with Mr. Barnhart. I'm not saying it was his decision, it was ours. But if, if the commission were to feel that that allocation should be modified, you know, as long as we have 12 units, deep restricted as affordable, and as long as 15% of the total units are at that six, 60% standard, then the, the mix can be...
No, I always thought the mix had to be somewhat uniform in types and...
It is. It's just the way the numbers worked out here, we had to make a judgment.
Okay.
But we're, we're happy to agree if the commission feels that it's more consistent to have, uh, the, the same allocation for the 60 and the 80 units.
Okay. And can you just go through the standards that you'd set about 830G?
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful for not just the commission, but the public as well.
Right.
It doesn't have to be a long, uh...
No, I was gonna save, I was gonna save that to, to more to the end, but I, I agree with the commission that it, it's probably the, the chair, that's probably a good idea. Again, and I emphasize, this commission, and I want the public to know this, is well aware of, sensitive to, and I think has been very, very cognizant of the standards that I want to review with regard to the standards, with regard to an 8-30G proposal. But I do that now for two reasons. One, I gotta make a record here in these particular proceedings. And then the second is, as a matter of not so much preaching to this commission, which knows as much about affordable housing and the standards as I do, but so that those, observing these proceedings, are aware of the standards that apply. So with that as background, and in accordance with the chair's request, 8-30G says that upon, and this is quoting, "Upon an appeal taken from the denial of an 8-30G application, the burden shall be on the commission to prove, based upon the evidence and the record, that the, that the decision from which such appeal was taken and the reason cited for such decision are supported by sufficient evidence in the record. The commission shall have the burden to prove, based upon the evidence and the record, compiled before such commission, that, one, the decision is necessary to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, and other matters which the commission may legally consider; B, such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing; and C, such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development." Now, in regard to that statute, our Supreme Court has instructed that the court must determine whether or not the record established, and I quote this from the Chirica, Roman Number Five LLC case, "That there is more than a mere theoretical possibility of such of a specific harm to the public interest if the application is granted. There has to be more than a mere theoretical possibility." That thought was picked up by the Supreme Court, again, in the Garden Homes versus Milford case, where it was stated, "The record must establish more than a mere possibility of harm to a substantial public interest. The record must contain evidence as to a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted. Mere concerns alone do not amount to sufficient evidence to support the denial of an affordable housing application. The cases have established the standard of a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result, and mere concerns do not satisfy that burden." Again, the Avalon Bay Communities case, going all the way back to 2007, say, stated, "There must be evidence in the record of a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted, and mere concerns alone are insufficient." And there's numerous cases. So I think, without belaboring it further, and if I have to get into other cases that deal specifically with traffic-related issues and stuff, I will, but in accordance with the chair's request, which I think is timely at this point, I wanted the record to be clear that this is a very unique situation that the commission deals with when we're dealing with an 8-30G application. And this, this, this commission has always dealt with it diligently and with integrity, and I just think the record should establish the standards that they have to apply, and I think they have tried to do over the course of the many applications under 8-30G that have come before you over the last, um, few years. So...
So, I mean, just to add the one final point, our local regulations with an 830G practically kind of go out the window. We have that standard to...
Right.
We have to abide by.
Yeah, I think, again, for the sake of the record and for the sake of, of, of just public information, the, the cases, and I have them here, I maybe should have gone on and on.
That's okay.
But the case law says that noncompliance with the provisions of the local regulations do not rise to the level of supporting a denial of an affordable housing application unless it is determined by the evidence in the record that there is a quantifiable probability that a harm will occur if that regulation is not complied with. So the, this application doesn't comply with coverage, it doesn't comply with setbacks, I don't know what else it doesn't comply with.
No, but that's fine. I just wanted to put that out there as well.
That doesn't mean the commission isn't being diligent.
No. And my only final question, and it doesn't have to be answered now, it can be answered during the presentation, either by you or, um, I'm sorry, I forget his name, I apologize.
Mr. Rose.
Thank you. Is the density, the, the obviously low hanging fruit is the density, 40 units in this area?
Right.
Very high density. I'd like to understand why we're having so dense of a development being proposed. Information as to economic feasibility would be, you know, profitability, revenues would be helpful. Why 40 units, not 20, not 10, all? Any information like that would, is something I would be seeking, and I don't need it right this second.
Right. And it would be something I will be addressing in the course of the proceeding.
I saw Commissioner Ford.
Just, yes, Attorney Fallon, just before we go much further, just want a couple questions on my, on the applicant himself, just to, I may have an issue sitting on the application. Have they closed on all the properties? I think there's three properties that they're merging here.
Uh, to my knowledge, they have.
Yes. I believe one property is, the 301 is what concerns me, is owned by Lucas Papa George. I may have a conflict there. Is that property closed?
Mr. Papa George is, um, is, I believe, the owner of that property, and I believe he also is connected with, um, Berkeley Road LLC.
I'm going to...
You're gonna accuse?
I've got a couple of reasons to...
No, no, that's fine. I don't have to give the reasons, but you're gonna accuse, that's fine.
I'm gonna accuse myself on that.
So you're heading out, then?
I am. I'm heading to Stanford at 9:00.
No worries.
Good luck.
Good luck with that.
All right, Commissioner, thank you very much.
Okay. Attorney Fallon?
Okay, so, Patrick Rose of Rose Tiso is gonna talk to you about the building. Just a few high points, not to steal his thunder. The entire building will be fully sprinkler, sprinkled with an NFPA 13 system. The applicant, from the outset here, and, and Mr. Rose and his team worked very diligently and constructively with the fire marshal with regard to the location of the building and its construction to ensure compliance with all the building and fire code requirements and to ensure all aspects of public safety. I'll be talking about later on, and I believe you have an email confirming the fire marshal's concurrence in that, and I'll be addressing that. The units are gonna raise and, and range in size. Pat will review that with you. The studio units will range from 563 to 667 square feet, the one bedrooms from 650 to 714 square feet, and the two bedrooms from 950 square feet. And as you'll see, there's a total of 51 parking spaces provided. So without further ado, my colleague, Mr. Rose.
And just for, I guess, um, for the record or for whatever, Commissioner Ford in recusing himself, this is not executive session, we don't have to appoint anybody. All the alternates during a, a hearing, public hearing like this have the right to ask questions and participate in the hearing. We'll determine, uh, one of the alternates to sit in executive session at a later date.
Mr. Rose? Good evening.
Good evening.
Pat Rose from Rose Tzone Company, 35 Brentwood Avenue in Fairfield, White Stark, Texas State of Connecticut, and representing Berkeley Road LLC. Project before you is three lots on the east side of Berkeley Road, combined about .75 acres, 32, 700 square feet total. The site itself slopes from the southwest corner to the northeast corner, which in the northeast corner, there are some small wetlands that exist and as part of the larger wetland that's beyond our property.
Excuse me, I can't hear you. Could you get the mic or speak a little louder?
Certainly.
Could you just repeat what you said about wetlands?
Just put the mic a little closer to you.
Sensible, huh? The wetlands, as you slope towards the northeast corner of the site, which is, in that map is the upper left-hand corner, there are small amounts of wetlands on our site, and beyond that, there's a larger wetland that's just part of the park beyond.
We did receive an inland wetlands permit.
Yeah, we have an inland wetlands permit, um, and I'll go through the plantings, but there are plantings that were proposed all along the edge of the wetlands to enhance that edge.
Attorney Fallon, before we go further, the inland wetlands permit is the subject of an appeal in Superior Court.
It is on appeal. Correct.
Thank you.
Entrance to the, the site is on the northern part of the site, and you have access from that northern part of the site to 51 parking spaces total. 32 of them are on grade, and 19 of them are under the building. So as you come in from Berkeley, you go to the rear of the property, um, there are a couple of parallel spaces there, and then you turn and go underneath the building where the parking area is in the rear, there are 19 parking spaces in that area. Also, as part of that driveway system, you come in and turn, and a fire truck can come in, turn, and then back into a section of grassroots pavers that are all the way in the corner of the site, the upper left-hand corner. You know, so they get back in, turn around, and go back out. Same motion would happen for dumpster removal, that the dumpster is at the rear of the building, that they could pick that up, back up, and then come back out. And, you know, the fire marshal has reviewed the site plan associated with how the movements would be, and he was, he was, he approved that in an email. Come on, if we go to SP2, what we've done for drainage and worked very closely with the town engineer to try and allay any fears that she had of exacerbating any flooding associated with our site and adding to another area. So what we've done, we're using pervious pavement for all the driveways and parking spaces. We are taking stormwater drainage from the pavement areas and catch basins, and they are connected by perforated pipe. So they are providing infiltration into the ground and groundwater. So they are providing infiltration into the ground and groundwater, um, as soon as you're getting into a catch basin, you're providing some infiltration. Those piping systems are connected to a stormwater quality device and then it goes to stormwater storage chambers, uh, five thousand two hundred and sixty cubic feet of storage area. Those are open bottom chambers, so the stormwater system recharges the groundwater and inasmuch as it also recharges the wetlands to the, to the east of us over time. What we've designed the system for is for a hundred-year flood, one-year storm event and there is no outlet for this system, is purely self-contained on the site. So we're not discharging other than infiltration to any other property. We created on the northern side where the, our site slopes down to our neighbor, we're creating a gravel swale with an underdrain on the north property line to protect any of our runoff going to the neighbor's property and this gravel swale discharges into the wetlands, which is to the east. The town engineer has approved our design, um, and we have also performed the percolation tests that they required, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and, and we're getting one inch per ten minutes, which is more than adequate for our stormwater system to operate perfectly, actually. It's, it's, it's very good, very good perk, so it's good. We are connecting our sanitary, uh, via six-inch sanitary lateral to an eight-inch line that's in Berkeley Road and the Superior Commission has approved this connection. Go to SP three. On SP three, we're showing the soil erosion controls, we have silt fence that is on three sides of the site, there's an anti-tracking pad at the proposed driveway entrance, which would be our driveway entrance for construction, um, we have a stockpile which is towards the east, which is protected by silt fence and all of the catch basins, once they are installed, will be protected with silt sacks. We're taking all of the state of Connecticut soil erosion control methods, um, for protecting, um, anything from getting off the site and, uh, getting out of our control. SP four, yep, landscape plan, we provided pin oaks along the parking lot and roadway with red maples along the south property line and then we have junipers and, uh, ornamental tree ins on the islands and then we're using switchgrass along the building facade in the park, between the building facade and the parking lot. The wetlands plantings that we're adding are, include black ash, American elder and juniper also. And then our lighting plan, we have provided blade-type LED fixture with full cutoffs that are mounted at twelve feet on the fixtures that are on the site.
Is that another sheet or just a here?
It's another sheet, Emily, I'm sorry, it's, it's past the detail though, I'll not go through all the details. Yeah, it's there. So we're, we are providing full cutoffs, we are not letting any sight light of our sight light off of our site as far as the foot candle ratings are on this photometric plan. We also have some lights that are on the building, about ten feet up, that are purely illuminating the parking that's along the building.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Harrison.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, your flow, I just had a question on the lighting. How often will that be on? Like, is it going to be on all night? Can you talk about that? Because I imagine it's going to be much different from the current dwellings that are there now and, you know, the potential impact on its neighbors.
It normally would be on all night because it, people can come home at any time, just no more than, the streetlights are on, you know, all night long either.
Is it light sensitive? Like, lights, you know?
Photo sensitive, yeah, photo sensitive, yes.
We did photometrics.
Yeah.
We did submit a photometrics, uh, analysis too that, that demonstrates that all that light, based on the fixtures we've chosen and whatnot, are going to be maintained on the site. So they'll have to meet whatever lighting, the lighting does in fact, the lighting plan does in fact meet your requirements in terms of hooded shields and night sky, et cetera, et cetera.
Dark sky.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, finish up. Go ahead.
Um, so they will be on all night, I don't know if you've heard about this lights-out Connecticut thing where, about migrant people, um, birds of, you know, having lights on at night is really actually detrimental to them, there's a big movement, but, okay. All right, that would just be one of my concerns is the lighting. Then how, what's the increase of, um, impervious pavement, let's say, now? Do you know the percentage? Do you want me to go up to that site plan?
Yeah, you, probably not going to be able to see it, so, so small. You know, that you're going from impervious, that is, you know, around twenty percent up to something that's sixty-five, seventy percent.
So it's twenty now or that it would be?
Correct.
Okay.
Is twenty-five percent now or go up to what?
Sixty-five to seventy, I was looking for the number, but.
Really impervious?
Impervious, yes. Building, build, and, and in some ways you can't count that all because you're using pervious pavement, so it's, you know, it's a fine line.
That's in the plan, is that right?
We're using pervious pavement, right.
Commissioner, Commissioner Braun.
Uh, do you know the brightness, sometimes LED can be brighter than other types of light? Can you, just, I can't, I can't pull up the report on anything here, I'm having trouble, but can you indicate what the lumens are or the brightness level is and if that's?
Luminaire lumens.
Made less bright? I got some complaints up around the road that it's too bright.
Right.
Will you approve those?
The lumens of the fixture, main fixtures are fifty-five ninety.
Say that again?
Fifty-five ninety luminaire lumens.
Fifty-five ninety?
Five-five-nine-zero.
Fifty-five.
Commissioner.
What, what?
That's on SP eight, that there's a lighting schedule. SP eight, Commissioner.
And, um, I'm.
And if you look at, on that, on that plan, we're showing that the lighting, um, at the highest, you know, in the rear of the property, there's a spot that's five point two is the highest, but most of them are less than two and many of them are between point five and one.
You literally have to fire people over yourself. I mean.
I can't hear you, there's, sorry.
No, no, you just, something caught our attention as far as smell, but.
Yeah.
We literally have the fire department down.
Maybe they're, it's not the fire, this is a good place to be.
No, I mean.
It might be doing something out back, but I'll check.
Yeah, no, I just, okay, sorry, where did we leave off?
You might have repeated the last.
Yeah, the, uh, what we're, what we've done with the lighting plan that shows the foot candle levels on the site, there's a couple of places where it's at five, but the majority of it are either less than two or even less than one on the site, so we're not talking a high lighting value.
Commissioner Bukowski, Bukowski, excuse me.
Thank you.
No, Bukowski.
I just had a few questions. Surrounding the property, um, because I can't see it on the map, these are all single-family homes, so what is going to be surrounding the property?
You've got single-family homes on the right and the left, so the rear, it is the park wetland area.
Okay, so that's the tongue of the park?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and so then that leads me to my next question, because do you know that there's quite a bit of flooding in the tongue of the park? I actually live on the other side. Um, and so when you say, I just need some clarification around, um, the water drainage and infiltration and you say it's self-contained, but how does that work? I mean, it goes into the ground?
It's going to go, all of it's going to go into the ground.
Okay, and then, right.
So then you've got a good, good percolation rate, it's just going to disseminate itself through the ground, some of it will go to the wetlands, but it, some of it goes to the wetlands now anyway.
Okay.
But it's going to go down, it's not going to flow out.
Okay, okay. Um, and then my last question, um, the dumpsters, it looks like they're in this back corner and so is there a house right next to that, throwing neighbors? And.
Do you have a kind of, uh, video surveillance or, uh, security?
Second, first floors.
There will be cameras, you know, in the parking lot, there'll be cameras underneath in the parking area, um, there'll be cameras at the entrance, you'll have swipes or, you know, bobs or some type of entrance system for the front door and, uh, they will have, probably end up having one on one of the side doors just because it might be more convenient for people.
And it'll be monitored by somebody in that house or like a?
No, it'll be, it'll be a company.
Eighty or something.
Yeah.
Mr. Harrigan, you heard that, right? You called all that?
Is there a little, uh, Peter, if you can repeat your question?
I was asking about this, like a security video surveillance in the surrounding parking lot, things like that, and he said that there will be cameras throughout that area and that it will be monitored, not in-house, like from a manager or something, but from like AEP type, uh, surveillance.
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to make sure the record gets everything.
Mm-hmm.
Was there any questions from the Commissioner, Commissioner Braun?
Um, I have a question about, um, can you provide us with a copy of the wetlands permit, including the staff recommendation? I don't think.
I believe.
I think it was in that.
Is that the master?
I believe it's already.
Is it in here?
Yes, if you look in my big bound, um, application.
One seventy-one of your package, I don't see it here, maybe.
I don't, I don't, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, firstly, for those of you smelling smoke, they are doing some training exercises out back in the training facility, so we're not on fire, but they are.
Thank you.
They are using smoke out. I don't believe that the wetlands permit is in that master link, um, and I sent that out by email, um, yesterday afternoon.
Oh, okay, I understand. I have a question, um, I'm looking at page one seventy-one of your master, it looks as though there's a great deal of pervious surface within what I believe to be the wetland upland review area, which is the line drawn X amount of feet beyond the wetland flag. Is that, am I correct in that?
Yes, yes.
How does that get, wow, that's, that's generally the area that's needed to protect the wetlands.
It's an upland review area, it's not a exclusionary line.
I'm aware of that.
So.
So you're adding pervious surface to?
We're adding pervious pavement, everything is pervious.
Whole site, what was?
We're adding pervious pavement, correct.
Well, well, it says pervious surface on the plan here, right there.
But it's pervious pavement, so, yes.
Although it says pervious. Okay, I'll take a look.
You're correct.
It's pervious pavement, pervious pavement is not completely pervious.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
It's pervious pavement, pervious pavement is not completely pervious, you know.
Right, and I know sometimes pervious pavement has something under it that makes it not pervious.
Uh, it has gravel underneath it, it's no, you know, which is, which is quite pervious, so that's.
I have another question about, um, the park, I, I don't know if you're the person to ask about, um, parking spaces.
Uh-huh.
Read this correctly, that there's nineteen spaces for this development or other?
No, it's fifty-one. Fifty-one, there's nineteen underneath the building and thirty-two on the site.
Fifty-one spaces for forty units and forty-three bedrooms, okay.
The parking ratio's one point three per unit. Yes, which I'll, I'll be elaborating on.
Any other?
Continue.
Hold on, uh, Commissioner Collins, excuse me.
The, um, garbage containment area there, we're looking through.
Speak up a little bit, please.
The dumpster?
Yeah, dumpsters, is that going to be like an enclosed shed or is it just open air?
It's open air, but it's fenced in completely, actually, completely fenced in.
And.
Hold on, Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you. Um, so there's one way in, one way out and the, under the building parking goes into this bigger lot, am I saying that correctly or?
Correct, you come in, park, come back out.
And then you have to come back out, okay.
Correct, it's one way in, one way out.
Question down here, Commissioner Braun.
Are, are there air conditioning units and if so, where are those located? Like, is there a wall of air conditioning, uh, HVAC on the outside, on the top, on the side or?
The condensing units will, the condensing units will be either in the roof's structure in open space or we'll end up going with a magic pack electric which has the condensing units in, in the unit itself.
So they won't be facing any of the neighbors?
No.
Or the wetland area?
No.
And is there a generator?
No, not currently.
Attorney Fallon, Mr. Rose.
Um, Emily, if we could go to the floor plan, I'll go through these pretty quick, just pretty straightforward, um.
Going to the architectural?
Parking level floor plan, um, which shows the nineteen spaces, you're entering on the left-hand side, coming in and there is an electric room, a sprinkler room, parking spaces, a stairway, um, that's an accessible spaces next to the lobby and mail area and there's a bike storage park next to that and then another stairway on the other side. Upstairs. First floor, um, you enter in on the Berkeley Road side, that's the main entrance to the building, you have ten apartments per level and, uh, the breakdown of apartments are eight studios, twenty-nine one bedrooms and three two bedrooms for a total of forty, there's ten per level. The studios range from five forty-two to six, sixty-seven square feet, one bedrooms range from six eighty square feet to nine seventy square feet and the two bedrooms range from nine fifty-nine to nine seventy-five. You have two means of egress on each floor, elevator in the middle of the building, pretty straightforward, it's a podium-type building, we have four floors above a concrete deck. Second floor, um, the same, we have twelve affordable apartments that have been designated on the floor plans, um, as per Attorney Fallon's layout of what, what they are, um, and the third and fourth floor plan are the same, they're, they're the exact same floor plan, ones, one bedroom studios and two bedrooms, so it's pretty straightforward.
Four total stories?
Four-story, it's four and a half-story building really because you're entering at the back, at the lower level where the parking is.
And how tall is it?
Total height is, uh, total height at the lowest point is fifty-three-two, total Elevations on the building, um, it's the front elevation, yep, up on the screen, um, off of Berkeley, you've got cultured stone on the bottom of, of the building that wraps around, uh, main entrance in the center, you've got a shed-type roof over the main entrance and the two lower windows and then in the center you have a board and batten siding going up two stories and then vinyl, horizontal vinyl siding on the two sides and then board and batten on the corners that wrap around. Up above on the upper level, what we've done is we've used the roofs to come down into the fourth story to try and lower the height of the building, um, and we, we're using a shake, a, a vinyl shake in that area. On the left side elevation, which is just below that, um, again, you've got the stone which is alternating between stone and siding, stone and the, towards the middle of the building, there's a brick portion, which is actually the elevator, which projects up above, above the roof, acts like a chimney, looks like a chimney, um, for the elevator overrun. for the elevator overrun, and then again, you go back to the siding and the stone siding, and then we've intermixed with this board and batten type pattern in between those. At the stairway, we're using brick also, um, and on the fourth floor, we've shown, gave a couple dormers and a sloped shed roof over the dormer and over the window at the stairway. Same thing on the other side, on the right-hand side of that elevation.
Is it three stories of residential or four stories of residential?
Four floors of residential.
Okay, so.
So the fourth floor is up in the roof.
Fine, so the, the bottom row of windows is residential.
Correct.
And then below that is the parking.
Correct.
But you will be able, I see a door there. You'll be able to access it on the, on the ground level, the floor, the.
It's a, it's a mid, it's a mid-level?
Mid-level.
Mid-level. You go, you go, if you went down, you'd go into the lower level where parking is. You go up, you'll go into the first.
Okay, is there a staircase then, I guess, to get to that door?
Correct.
Okay, that's where I was.
That's one of the exit stairs.
So they're gonna be able to look underneath and see cars?
On this elevation, it will not, you will not see cars.
You will not see cars.
Go to the next.
Do you want to go back to that floor plan?
Yeah, go, yeah, that's fine. That, that's the rear elevation where you're showing the entrance into the garage is the lower portion. Siding above that, shakes above that in a large dormer, um, at the fourth floor.
Is the parking below the building below grade then?
It's partially below grade.
Partially, okay.
Right, it's why I say four and a half stories.
No, no, that's fine. Now. Okay.
So what, what you end up with is, in this location on this side, you need some open area in order to ventilate that lower parking area. So that's what you're seeing on, on the lower section on that.
And the entrance is, when I'm looking at this plan to the right, thank you.
Oh, similar layout on the right-hand side that we have. The stairway is in brick. We have a opening between stone and, well, the final siding as you go down the building with separations of the board and batten siding, which separates those gables as you go across, trying to break up the building.
Thanks, Pat. Obviously, Pat will be here throughout the proceedings should you have any questions.
Commissioner Francis, hold on.
Commissioner, yes.
All the finishes in each apartment are they plus same?
Yes, they have to be under eight dash thirty-G. There can't be any differential between the affordable and non-affordable.
Sorry.
Did you say there is a, um, a drawing showing where the affordable units are or will it be a too big of a vacay?
No, there's, there is, there are, the, the affordable units have been, have been designated, um, and both, there's a plan that shows it, and then it's referenced in my, uh, affordable, um, affordability plan. I think Mr. Barnard was pointing out that there might be some discrepancy between which specific units are shown on the, on, on the plan and which are in my, um, in mine, but we'll, we'll get that straightened out with staff. And as I said before to the chair, um, if, if the commission feels that the allocation between the sixty percent units and the eighty percent units should be different than what I'm proposing in the affordability plan, we're not uncomfortable with that. Because you gotta have, the way the numbers work here, we have to have six units that are, um, to be marketed at the sixty percent and six that are at the, at the eighty percent. So there is that flexibility.
Any questions from Mr. Rose? Attorney Fallon?
Yeah, just to continue some of the, the technical housekeeping, we did have a code enforcement review meeting on October eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two. A copy of the code minutes are submitted at page twenty-eight of my application material. Uh, all the comments and recommendations of the code review have been addressed and complied with. Uh, the building construction complies with all and/or exceeds all requirements of the, uh, Building and Fire Code. You also have, as part of the record, I'm sure Mr. Went made part of it, uh, there's an email from, uh, Megha Jane at the engineering department dated April twenty-one of this year, and she writes to Jim, "I reviewed, uh, I've reviewed my comments," I believe she's referring to the comments she made at the code meeting. "I've reviewed my comments, except percolation tests, all have been addressed. For on-street parking comment, I leave up to zoning." Uh, we did subsequently do the percolation test, so she has that as well. Similarly, we did receive approval on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three from the WPCA for the connection, uh, to the sewer system for this unit, uh, for these units, so that is also taken care of. Uh, you'll also find in your material, uh, an email from the fire marshal, uh, Fire Marshal Higgins to Mr. Went dated May two, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, he writes, "James, the chief and I discussed the project at two seven seven, two nine one, three oh one Berkeley Road, and do not see any issues from a fire department point of view." So, at this point in time, what I would like to do is a call on Mr. Greg Del Rio of Hardisty and Hanover. He prepared the traffic report, uh, that has been submitted, and I'm gonna ask him just to, uh, briefly overview, uh, his, uh, analysis and findings with regard to the proposal. Greg.
Thank you, John. Um, Greg Del Rio, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut for Hardisty and Hanover, offices in, uh, Norwalk, Connecticut. So we conducted a traffic study. This first slide is showing, uh, just some neighborhood context of the site on Berkeley Road. Um, residential street thirty feet wide, parking on both sides, uh, one lane in each direction. Um, we have Alton, uh, to the north, uh, which is a T-intersection, uh, stop-controlled on the Alton approach, um, and it's free flow on the other two approaches along Berkeley. And to the south, we have Greenfield, um, which is a four-way stop-controlled intersection. So that gives you a little context to the, to the street itself. Um, so trip generation, I think is the next slide, and.
Commissioner Harrigan, can you zoom in, please?
Paper copy here. Uh, so for forty dwelling units, um, in the morning, uh, estimated trips are sixteen total trips. Um, four of them would be entering in the morning, about twelve of them would be exiting, so twelve exiting, so there's about sixteen that going in and out of the driveway.
Can you just go, what's the, what's the timeframe for that?
That's a one hour. These are one-hour volumes. These are peak hour volumes, so it's even much quieter. You know, as residential, it's very quiet during the rest of the day.
For what time of day, just?
Uh, this is like seven to eight, seven thirty to eight thirty.
What dates were these done on?
Uh, these are trip generation, so this is a weekday. These are not the counts. The next slides will show you the actual background volumes on the street.
What time period? Why didn't you do the, the actual?
Summer, winter, spring?
Oh, the counts themselves, that's coming up in the next couple of slides. And, uh, I, I will get that information to you.
We're gonna give you that information.
Thank you.
Under the count.
It's all in, it's all in the report. I believe it was, uh, possibly March, but I'll take a look at the, at the data in a minute. Um, again, this is not existing data. This is an estimate of the traffic that will be generated by the site, by the project, by the, by the, uh, forty units. Um, so twelve exiting, that's about one car every five minutes over the hour, and, and four entering, that's about one car every fifteen minutes entering over the hour. Uh, in the evening peak, so that's four to five, five to six, that, that time period when everyone's coming home from work, um, there's about twenty trips generated to and from the, the driveway, uh, twelve entering and, and eight exiting. Um, so again, the twelve entering is about one every five minutes on average, and, uh, eight is a little, is a little less, you know, six, seven, eight minutes, one per every seven, eight minutes.
I'm sorry, could you just pick up a little bit? I can't hear you.
So twelve, twelve entering in the evening peak period, one, about one car every five minutes, right? And you got about eight exiting, and it's about one car every six, seven, eight minutes, uh, for a total of twenty trips generated in and out. So this next slide is going to show you.
Yes, go ahead. Um, so I'm just wondering, because I know we said that there's parking on both sides of the street.
Correct.
Um, and it's a thirty-foot wide street.
Correct.
So if there's one way in and one, I'm just, so.
So basically, it acts like any driveway on the street.
Okay.
Right, so if you're a driveway, if you're residential, you come out of your driveway, you make a left or right, and, and you travel down the road.
And so then we're thinking, if, our cars typically parked on both sides of the road, and then what does that make the road? Is it more like a single lane or is it still?
It's a little bit of a shared street in both directions as, as most residential streets are, right? Every now and then, you've gotta kind of wait for the car coming your other way.
From now, kind of.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm, that's the way those kind of residential streets operate. Yep.
Commissioner Harrison?
Hello. So, from what I understand, so you have about seventy parking spaces, is that right?
Fifty-one.
Oh, sorry, fifty-one. Okay, I thought that was, okay, I thought it was fifty, then nineteen, okay. But this seems like a very low-ball estimation of weekday morning trips.
It's actually high.
It is?
Yeah, first of all, it's, we're not showing the increment because there's some houses there so that are generating trips, so the increment is actually a little bit less. We didn't take that credit. And the second reason it's a little high is we use, and you can see the footnotes to the trip generation, we use the low-rise apartments, um, and the data actually shows, so low-rise is for like two-story apartments. Four-story apartments have a slightly lower trip gen, but we use actually the low-rise, which has a slightly higher. So if I use the four-story trip generation, these numbers would be slightly lower. And it's based on a lot, a lot of data that they use. This is from the ITE, uh, trip generation manual.
And then, I mean, I, most people who live in condos, apartments, they have two cars. I imagine if they're couples or their families.
Well, that's not really true, not to interrupt, but we do have eight, eight studios and, and twenty-nine one bedrooms. So we don't, we don't really believe that is likely with only, what, three two-bedrooms? And the one, you know, look at the one, let's, again, the one point three ratio per unit is very consistent with a lot of projects this commission has seen under eight dash thirty-G. Um, and indeed, in an, in an earlier case a few years ago, which was the Garden Homes case involving the Bronson Road development, which has yet to be built, but may start soon. The court explicitly found that in the context of an eight dash thirty-G application, a parking ratio of one point two per unit, which was what was proposed in that case, uh, was adequate and didn't rise to the level of a public health and safety issue that outraged the need for affordable housing. So, w- to be clear on the parking side of things, w- we think, one, that with the unit mix, including eight studios and twenty-nine one bedrooms, two, with the factor that we think this development will at least in part be appealing to a lot of more senior people who are looking to downsize, empty nest, et cetera, et cetera, that the parking ratio here is, is consistent, will be more than adequate. Obviously, we wanna have sufficient parking for our tenants. We think we will. But from a purely legal standpoint, I think the one point three per unit has been shown to be, um, effective in the context of an eight dash thirty-G.
No, no, I appreciate that. And I would just say, this, I'm not familiar with that neighborhood that you're referencing, that court case, but I know this Berkeley Road area. I know it's very congested. I've, I've driven down there many, many times, so I, I, there's clearly gonna be overflow parking. People are gonna have gas. Is there gas parking?
We have, we have the fifty-one parking spaces on site, and.
That's all residential or is there an area for visitors?
There, it's, it will not, it's not restricted.
So it's not assigned?
It's fifty-one spaces.
Okay.
It's not gonna be reserved.
Okay. I mean, we live in a car world. I have to imagine there'll still be people parking on the street for overflow for gas parking. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that Bronson Road is a completely different, um, layout. That's basically you, the only road you're talking about is the new road being developed for that building that's on a dead end on the river. This is different. This already has parking on the street, which then could have more parking from overflow from this. So I think you have to look at site-specific characteristics, and I don't think there's any one rule that the court can say in every instance, this is what you need. It has to be site-specific.
I, I don't, I don't.
We talked about that in many applications.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that in, in principle at all. I would say, however, that I think that the, the question of the parking ratio and its adequacy does have a certain, if not every situation is, is unique, okay? I, I think that we have a situation where courts have generally found, this commission has often found. I mean, the parking ratio, I'd have to go back and look at the records, and I probably will have a chance to do it, assuming we don't figure, finish tonight, and I can bring you this data, but I think back to the development that we did on Black Rock Turnpike in Moritz, uh, which is now up. I'll check the data on that. I did that one, and I, I have some sense that the parking ratio there is very similar. And there were certain, there were similar concerns raised, if you, those of you who were on the commission at that time, about certain neighbors concerned about on-street, uh, parking because they felt the parking on-site wasn't adequate, but that hasn't materialized. Um, and, and I will get you that data, assuming we don't close the hearing tonight. If we do, I don't know what I can do, but I.
And what, can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
The, um, I can't see in here, or maybe I missed it when you were mentioning it, the, um, trip generation, what's, what did you come up with for the trip generation on the existing, there's three duplexes on the site, right? That was confusing because one of the reports says three single-family homes are being demolished. Are they duplexes right now? The three houses being demolished?
No, there's single.
Oh, somewhere I saw they were.
Huh? Two duplexes and one single.
Okay.
So the total of five units of housing.
Okay, and, and what was the trip generation now that you observed?
Counts were not done at the existing driveway.
Well, it hasn't been presented yet? I'm sorry.
Not presented, we, we, we did not.
I can't hear you.
We didn't count the existing driveways.
I'm sorry, I still can't hear you.
We didn't, we didn't do a traffic count relative to the existing five units of housing.
Don't we wanna know how it changes from existing to the future?
We, we, we counted the volumes of traffic on the street itself on Berkeley, which captured whatever driveways were active and generating traffic in and out on that block plus through traffic.
Okay.
Okay?
And that's.
So, again, our numbers are actually conservative because we did not show the increment. So let's just say those three houses were generating, for easy math, one trip in, one trip out during those hours. That would have been six trips, and we're generating twenty trips. We're actually just generating fourteen more, but we're not showing that. That's, again, for whoever mentioned that it seems low, I mean, seems high, I mean, seems low, it's actually a little high.
Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Braun, are you done?
Um, well, yeah, I'll wait till you finish your presentation. I have something about speed, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, that's.
Average, yeah, eighty-fifth percentile.
Oh, well, let's get to that. Commissioner Harrison?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just ITE, the, this is, you're referencing the eleventh edition. Now, that, there's no data specific to Connecticut and Fairfield, right? It's kind of average from around the country.
Correct.
So it's not specific to Fairfield.
Correct.
Thank you for confirming that.
Continue.
Uh, Commissioner Bukowski.
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
No worries. Um, I just needed some clarification around what you said around your observations or your assessment of Berkeley Road as it is now.
Correct.
Speak to that again. I didn't catch that. I thought that this was, that those counts were done.
That's coming up in.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
Yeah, well, I'll go over the existing volumes that are on the existing streets. Um, as far as speeds, uh, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was, uh, twenty-six miles per hour in both directions. So, we switched up? Okay, so now we're showing, uh, the morning peak hour trip generation, so this is just showing the assignment of those trips that were in the table prior. So, um, the twelve trips exiting, estimating five trips will be making a right out, and seven trips will be making a left out, and then two trips coming in from each direction in the morning. If you can kind of slide that up. Thank you. Um, in the evening, it's three trips making a right, five trips making a left, and again, this is based on background traffic and the observations. Seven trips would be coming in from the south and five trips coming in from the north. So the next one overlays that onto existing traffic. Thank you. So in the morning, there's thirty-two, uh, vehicles coming southbound on Berkeley and thirteen vehicles going north. Um, so going north, we'd be adding the two vehicles entering the site, and then from the site going north, we would be adding the five trips. And then from the site going north, we would be adding the five trips to the thirteen. So thirteen would go to fifteen south of us and the thirteen would go to eighteen north of us. Follow?
And seven goes to thirty-two.
Correct. So south of us going south would be thirty-nine. And coming towards us, the thirty-two would go up to thirty-four with the two extra trips. And then if we slide down to the P M peak, there you go. Sort of the same drill. Um, we have twenty-four vehicles is the existing, uh, traffic that's coming down Berkeley. We'd be adding five north of the, um, site coming towards us. So that would be twenty-nine coming south. And then south of us, we'd have the twenty-four plus the five, so that would go up to twenty-nine. And then going north, we have thirty vehicles. We would be adding seven towards the site. And then we would be adding three more after the site. So you'd have thirty-seven approaching and thirty-three, uh, north of the site.
Mr. Del Rio, are these, the, the last two slides, uh, at least on this one, thirty going up, twenty-four going down, these are actual counts?
Yes. Those are actual counts.
And they were taken on weekdays? Uh, I know a question was asked, Greg, when they were taken yesterday, were, it, it, when were those?
Hold on one second.
Counts were conducted-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm having a problem with her.
Could you go ahead?
Counts were conducted in November twenty-twenty-one.
And how many?
So that was weekday and Saturday counts.
How many dates, how many times were?
So one, one week was, was counted for the roadway and then the intersections were counted for one day.
Okay. Well, one day's worth of counts.
Yeah. But the, but the, the roadway itself and the thirty and the thirty-twos and those numbers we worked, that was, uh, taken over the course of the week. That was a week.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we picked the peak.
So say-
These are actually the peak lines.
So the thirty and the twenty-four in this case is a week's worth of data.
Based on a week's worth of data.
And what was the day's worth of data, the intersection?
The, uh, I think it was Friday the nineteenth.
And that's the intersection da- data?
Yes.
Okay. On just, the intersection being what? Berkeley and, is it Greenfield? Is it Greenfield? Okay.
Correct.
Commissioner Pocock, Pocowski.
Sorry, sorry, I'm, I, so over the course of the week, is it the mean or is this, is one, how did you choose or is it?
It's, it's the mean from the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
It's typically the way it's done. I can check though what we exactly did for this particular.
Okay, so it wasn't a full week, it was a couple of days from, a few days from the week?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, and then the intersection was one day? Was, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide shows the level of service at the driveway, which is the level of service A. Um, no delays and, and no queuing, uh, anticipated, uh, for the driveway activity. And that's a summary of the traffic study.
Thank you, Mr. Del Rio. Mr. Del Rio will be available for questions during the course of the proceedings. Questions, Brian.
Quick question. Uh, did you review or look into tra- uh, not traffic, um, accident history?
Yes. Uh, we have a summary in the traffic study, uh, three years, um, and if you give me a minute. There was only two crashes. They were, they were both in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one year. And one was, uh, backing out of a driveway and the other one was a side swipe in the same direction. There was not a lot of information in the traffic report, but that's usually a parked car.
And you-
Because what it did say was a side swipe in the same direction, so that would not be the head-on or side swipe in opposite direction.
And just, you, you looked at, um, what, Fairfield police records?
Correct.
Um, any questions? I got a question. Did you do a sightline analysis?
Yes, we did. So that's where the twenty-six miles per hour came from and two hundred and eighty-seven feet to each direction since it's a straight.
Have that, put that up quickly.
If, if you look, uh, if you look, Mr. Chairman, um, there is, in the appendix of the traffic report, uh, I'm trying to find exactly-
Hundred and sixty-sevens.
Stopping sight distance calculations is part of the appendix.
Thank you.
And it contains all of the math.
What page is that on?
Uh, it's in the, it's in the appendix section, Commissioner, of the traffic reports. If you go to the back and it's under a, it says stop sight distance calculations. And the reason I pointed out is it has all the details, take you back to your days in geometry. But the most important thing that I wanted to make sure is part of the record, which it is, because it's in the traffic report, is there is a-
Hold on, hold on.
Can you just, can you just mute it and then restart it? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. There's email correspondence, uh, from Mike Calanti, who was at, ended the time at Har- uh, Har- Har- Hardesty and Hanover. And, uh, he is writing to Laura Pooley, providing her all of this site information. And then she replies on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, "Mike, hi, Mike, I, I think what you have looks good. I haven't been out to the site myself, but it appears you've covered the requirements for both S S D and I S D." So that's from, uh, the town, I, I would submit and go from there. So I think that's, that's from the town engineering department, having reviewed, uh, the sightline calculations and applied both the S S D and the I S D approach, which I know the commission is familiar with.
So where, when doing the, uh, sightline analysis, um, did you take into account parked cars? Or were they, as it, in pictures being submitted to us, it looks like, uh, neighbors and residences parked their car on the street regularly.
Right.
Was that, was that taken into account or was the cars, in doing the analysis, uh, is pretended as if they weren't there, for example?
It's covered in detail in the traffic report and rather than look, I can, but the answer, the answer is we did not include the parked cars in the right of way because we were advised by the engineering department that we, we did not or should not do that. So the sightline analysis is based upon, but I'll find it's, 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 there's a detail in it here. As a matter of fact, if you look in the summary page, it reads-
What page is that on the master?
Pardon?
What page is that on the master?
This is in the, uh, this is the traffic report, uh, and-
What page are you referring to though? Like, I'm on page one fourteen of the master?
I don't know what you mean, but I'm, I'm referring to the traffic report.
Okay, oh, okay.
And in, and on the opening page of the traffic report, there's a, there's a cover letter and it states, and this is further addressed in the body of the report, "The I S D and S S D analysis was reviewed by Laura Pooley, the town engineer, and she concurs with the methodologies and findings of the I S D and S S D analysis provided. The email correspondence are included in the appendix of this report. In another similar access review for Beach Road and Beacon Square, the town has determined that parked vehicles, uh, should not impact I S D or S S D." So this is nothing new. The engineering department applied the same approach, uh, again, to two other eight dash thirty G projects, which you're familiar with. One is Beacon Square and the other is Beach Road.
So there's no recommendation, um, to have, um, the police or any kind of, any kind of restrictions on on-street parking near the entrance to the site?
There is not. And the other thing is, and, and the other thing that's interesting about that as long as we're talking about it, which I don't think has been said yet, and I know I've seen the same photographs and I'm sure we'll see them again. There are five units of housing on this property now, okay? So i- it, a lot of what you see there in those pictures, especially proximate to our site and the driveway, very well could be, probably are, people parking based upon those five units of housing. Those are going to be demolished and there'll be fifty-one spaces on site. So I could make a strong argument, I think, that there'll actually be an improvement in terms of the on-street park-
Well, you're adding forty units though, I mean.
I, I, I'm just talking about very proximate to the driveway though.
No, I know, but I mean, your point is, yeah, I see your point, but I think you're adding forty units, I'm not sure, but regardless. Was there-
Yeah, I, um-
Commissioner Braun.
Um, just reading through some of the neighbors' letters, it was indicated that, um, the wire was put across the road in the summer, but this indicates it's in November, like, um, when was this, when were these studies done about speed?
In November.
In November, not in the summer at all?
No.
Okay. And, um, it's just, it always is odd when there's a coincidence of the exact distance needed is the exact distance available. So the exact distance needed for the I S D measurement is two hundred and eighty-seven and that's the exact distance available. The same thing with the S S D, the exact distance needed is a hundred and sixty-seven, one direction, a hundred and sixty, the other direction, and that's the exact distance available.
I, I-
Yeah, that's just the way they-
I don't understand how, how it would be that-
If it's met, they just show up to where it's met. They don't, you know, it could say one sixty-seven plus.
Oh, you mean it could be more?
Right, exactly.
Interesting. And, um, twenty-six miles an hour seems to me quite slow. There's no speed limit on this road according to this report.
Is there, there's no posted speed limit?
I don't know if there's a posted speed limit on the road or I don't know if there's a sign per se on the road.
Which means it's twenty-five then, okay.
Right, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. But the, the data is in the appendix, the actual-
The actual raw data? I can't find the appendix to hear, but I guess it's in here.
If, Mr. Wen, just for clarification, I believe you said that, um, the appendi- the full report with the appendix was set out separately than the agenda?
Oh.
If you're looking at the link in the master, it excludes the appendices that was posted separately. And I've sent you a link to where we have posted that. It's not, it's not in the link, it's on the agenda, it's on a separate link.
And there's also hard copies of the report if anybody wants to.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Um, I guess I missed that email and had it separate pending. And, um, all these tests were done November twenty, nineteenth, Friday, between Friday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one and Saturday, November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Correct, correct.
And, does it matter that that's across a holiday week? Does that change anything in your opinion?
I don't-
Thanksgiving or pandemic Thanksgiving? Anyone that year, as I recall?
They, uh-
We had about five people at ours that week, that's fine.
Um, actually, we, we did a twenty percent adjustment factor to, to the volumes because of that.
Would that be in the appendix then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's actually in figure two in the body of the report as well.
Just speak up a little bit, sorry.
It's in the body of the report as well.
Thank you.
And I have one further comment or question about, um, the sightline. We have actually considered, um, parked cars in our sightline, uh, analysis in other decisions we've made. And there's no prohibition, legal or otherwise, in doing it. Just because somebody said you don't need to do it doesn't mean it's not relevant. And to me, safety of the public is the most relevant thing here. So if parked cars are on the side of the road and if there is overflow parking that can make it worse, to me, that's very relevant to the sightline analysis.
Respectfully, I think the difficulty you have in the context of an eight dash thirty G application, and what I said at the beginning, what you'll get tired of me saying at the end, is mere speculation. And you have to have a quantifiable probability that there's a situation that is weasely probable to cause harm and you would face meeting that burden with a, a, a report from your town engineer saying everything is okay. So I'm not trying to be flippant about it, but I think we have to, we got to consider, safety is preeminent. Nobody want, we don't want to see our tenants be put in jeopardy. We don't want to see anybody who lives in the neighborhood be put in jeopardy. But the facts that exist are that we meet the sightline standards that are applicable here and that has been confirmed not by Mr. Del Rio only, but by your own town engineering department.
Well, and, and a lot of that depends on what question was asked. I don't know, I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen-
Well, you can read what you, what you, what you-
All the reports, but did she specifically look at parked cars or she, did she simply?
Yes. The, is, is the, the, this is the same conclusion that was reached by the engineering department in, in the Beacon Square case and, and, and the Beach, Beach Road case. Don't forget, Beach Road also, I was not involved in that, but there was also a question of, you know, parked vehicles and calculation of the site.
We had a, if I remember correctly on that, though, we had a split opinion on that. Um, so I'm not, not sure how, well, regardless, I think we had a split opinion on that.
Is the Laura-
The only, the only other thing I'll say is every single driveway on this road has the same situation. So, and there's been no crashes in the last three years due to, there was one person backing out of a driveway. So there's no, right? It's the same situation for every driveway on the road. They have parked cars that they need to see when they're going in and out.
Well, I think it could be in order of magnitude worse if you have forty people going in and out as opposed to one or two people going in and out.
Well, if, if we had, right, we have zero though, so.
Um-
We may have zero, sorry.
Zero crashes. So the, it's a safety concern is what we're talking about.
And we also have the key.
We have no precedent of a, of a, of a safety concern here.
Uh, just to clarify, is the Laura Pooley report, is that in the master or in the appendix that we got in the separate email?
It's in, it, it's referenced in the, in the cover letter, but if you want to see the actual sightline calculations and Ms. Pooley's confirmatory email, uh, it's in the appendix, uh, stop sight distance calculations.
And her email is in there also, so we can see all the-
It's at the end, yeah. If you look at the very end of the six or seven pages of the calculations, there is an email exchange with her and, uh, Mr. Quanti. And that's it.
I unfortunately was not able to observe the, uh, appendix because it came in a separate email.
Correct.
So I would, um, I would hope we could keep, uh, the hearing open so that we could review that and if we have any further questions, we can get them addressed.
I would fully expect we will leave the hearing open.
Yeah, I, I'll say this at this, I mean, what I've tried to undo, uh, is leave the hearing open for the public to hear the initial presentation, digest it and have the ability in the intervening weeks to, uh, generate a response, uh, in their public comment section. So we can certainly start public comment tonight. Uh, and my, my, I think informal thought and policy is to keep it open at least one hearing so that we, an extra two weeks is able, not to, even for the commission to dig- digest it, but for the public as well in hearing the presentation, in hearing the applicable standards that we face, uh, to have that opportunity to come back um, and not just be, you know, kind of get it tonight and have a one-and-done thing. So that's my, uh, my expectation. I appreciate Attorney Fallon, uh, supporting that, I guess.
I think that's very prudent.
Yeah. Commissioner Corcillo, and then Commissioner Harrison.
Maybe a question for Mr. Wen. So I, I share the concern about the sightlines around the driveway. What I would love to see is daylighting around the driveways, bumping out the sidewalk, uh, to address that. But, but if the applicant was willing to do that, is that even within their ability or is that a determination the town engineer has to make?
I'm not sure I understand the question. There, there is a sidewalk proposed along the front edge of this property, but when you say bump out, I'm not sure what you're meaning.
So, so by bumping out the sidewalk immediately, uh, adjacent to the driveway, you daylight the sidewalk, so it essentially forces any street parked cars to set back from the, uh, from the driveway. You follow?
I, I think I understand your question would be whether or not the town engineer recommends that parking be banned for a certain distance on either side of the driveway? Is that?
Essentially, yeah, and, and potentially even creating, by bumping out the sidewalk into the, the roadway there, you, you actually, you're not just telling them they can't.
Typically, the bulbow would only be at, at, at an intersection or at a crosswalk point to kind of shorten the length of travel for pedestrians and to create a visual queue. Typically, wouldn't be done mid-block where there's not crosswalk infrastructure. There aren't any existing sidewalks on the street at all, um, and, but, but it's proposed for this particular site. But I understand your question in terms of whether or not, as I, and tell me if I'm misinterpreting your question, whether or not it would be prudent to restrict parking for a certain distance on either side of the driveway.
Yeah. And, and the only other thing I would say about that, and I can certainly say for final summation, but realizing, that, that maybe I'm not making a density argument here, but if the issue is sightline based upon the prevalence of on-street parking as demonstrated by some of the photographs that we've seen and will probably see in the proceeding, I think, again, it's relevant to point out that a review of the accident history shows that there's not been one accident- as demonstrated by some of the photographs that we've seen and will probably see in the proceeding, I think, again, it's relevant to point out that a review of the accident history shows that there's not been one accident on this street in recorded time referencing someone getting clipped coming out of their driveway. And, so, I mean, the-
I understand your point.
Yeah.
I understand your point.
Okay.
Um, well, I think the, it's a fair question to ask, not just our engineering department.
Oh, sure.
Maybe something to consider from the applicant's point of view, if that's something they would be willing to do if it's possible, but we'll-
If we get positive feedback from the engineering department, and we're putting in a sidewalk anyways.
Yeah.
So, we, we'd have no harm with that.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if that needs even police review, but it's something to do in the intervening two weeks, which is another reason why I think-
Mm-hmm.
not closing the hearing in an eight thirty G is helpful. Um, also, okay, Commissioner Harrison.
For Mr. Wen, um, Laura Pooley, she's no longer with us now, she's retired.
That's correct.
So, would we, we still obviously go through the engineering department for questions if we have?
Well, given the dialogue tonight, we are certainly gonna follow up with our engineering department as to their position on, uh, adjacent parking relative to the sightline.
And the bump out, just, that would be for traffic easing thing?
Well, again, I bet. It, it's really more of a making the driveway visible, as I understand the, the concern, so we, we would certainly follow up with our engineering department, get clarity on that.
Commissioner McCosky.
Actually, I think it was, it was Mr. Wen, but around, like, how often are cars parked on, on the street, right? And like, and so, somebody could say you don't need to take those into account with sightlines, but like, would frequency or people, the consistency in which people do park on the right of roads, like, would that justify us needing to take them into account, or wanting to take them into account?
Well, I, I think the prevalence of parking sometimes factors into that. I think it's on a fairly regular basis, there is parking on both sides of the street, as evidenced in the photos.
I can't, I can't hear you very well.
Okay. We will get clarity, uh, on that issue. I think it's fairly common that there's parking on both sides of the streets, some of the photos in the traffic report, you know, substantiate that as well. Um, and I think that factors in to the site stopping distance versus intersection site stopping distance preference. As, this, this report is suggesting that because the sightline goes through adjacent driveways all over the town right of way, um, that site stopping distance was the preferred standard, which is not what a driver sees when they exit the driveway, but what a car on the road sees the distance they need to stop when it's a car exiting. But, we'll, we'll review that again with the town engineer to get clarity on that issue as it relates to the parking concerns that have been articulated.
Can we take, like, a five-second audio break? I'm having a little bit of issue.
Sure.
It's, um- Can we try to, um, can we try to handle all of these targets?
I'm gonna run a quick, a quick drink of Coke, because we'll take just a two-minute break. Um, we have some technical difficulties.
Oh, yeah, you know, there are a few places that do it really, the issue is, it's usually, like, if you're, if you're in a, a high-traffic, you know, I don't think it makes any sense to do it in two corners. But, you know, it's just for the street, and I think it's, it's really, uh, this whole thing.
Tell the folks that maybe other people are working in the streets, uh, really, including, uh, the driveway.
What it's gonna do, like, of the street if we did?
Yes. We're gonna redial in, so if you're connected by the phone, you're gonna have to redial in, or we're gonna hang up and then react.
You were trying to say, obviously, you're in, you don't have to, I remember.
Um, any other, I assume, is Mr. Del Rio finishing up?
I think he, he finished.
Yeah, the presentation is-
Any questions for Mr. Del Rio? Further questions, excuse me? Okay, thank you, Mr. Del Rio. Attorney Fallon, any?
How you wanna, I appreciate, I mean, I obviously have, I wanna address your comment about Y forty, et cetera, but the question is, you wanna go to public comment?
No, let's start, let's, I, that I was gonna ask you to address, um, because I think that needs to be addressed in your initial application.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, your initial presentation. Uh, and if you're done after that with your presentation, we can go to public comment. I would just, I would do as much as we can, um, with that, this evening, um, and leave it open for public comment to continue the next hearing, and then for you to sum up that.
Fine.
Unless something else comes up that, you know, requires consideration, so.
That's fine. So, Y forty, I, I think you have to start with the, the intent, the statutory intent of eight dash thirty G, which not everyone likes, and I recognize that. But, it's, it's the reality we're dealing with, uh, until further notice, I guess. Eight dash thirty G was really based upon a program whereby to incentivize private developers to develop more units of affordable housing, based upon the state's need for affordable housing. They were going to get the benefit of greater density, uh, for the market units than might otherwise be allowed by, uh, local zoning regulations. Okay, so where that leaves a developer is, in order to make the site work, make the development work economically, and to create sufficient affordable units, you need density. So, you start with the point of view of, okay, how many, if you're a responsible developer, how many units of housing can I safely, again, looking at the sta, the, the case law that we talked about, can I safely place on this property? And I think when we took that analysis and said, okay, how do we maximize this property, uh, so that we can maximize the number of units we have to lease? We thereby are maximizing the number of affordable units, we looked at the site. So, what did we do? We spent over a year, and we looked at drainage, we, we wanted to make sure that we could look at drainage, we looked at traffic generation, we wanted to make sure that we could safely address whatever density we were gonna propose. We looked at how many parking spaces we could get on the site, and we came up with fifty-one. And where that led us to was a conclusion that forty units work on this site. There's a win-win there, because obviously, we get more units, which helps us defray the cost of the affordable units, but the town gets more affordable units. In this case, meaningful affordable units, twelve of them. And what we're doing here, and, and we are gonna come back next two weeks from now, so I'll, I'll, I'll do a better job summarizing these data. But, the density you have here is not out of character, I do not believe, with a lot of similar projects, or some similar projects you've seen. Here we have forty units on approximately three-quarters of an acre, say roughly thirty-seven square feet. I'll get you thirty-seven thousand square feet, I'll get you the exact number. I referenced Maritz. I'll go back and look at that, those numbers, but my recollection on that, and some of you were on the, the commission at that time, was something like twenty-six units on something like twenty-seven thousand square feet. I'll get you those numbers. So, what I'm saying is, to be candid about it, a developer always starts based upon the whole intent of the statute, saying, well, how many units can I safely get on here, uh, in order to maximize the number of units, thereby maximizing affordable units. In this case, we believe that number is properly forty. And we believe, if you look at the data that we've talked about to date, so far, the engineering department, the fire department, the WPCA, the inland wetlands agency, there's concurrence here, and there's no evidence that forty is an overdevelopment of this site. And that's, you'll probably hear it again in a different context when I, when I summarize, but that's my answer to your question.
No, I understand, and, I mean, here we have single-family residences, duplexes, and now we have a forty-unit apartment building that's going up.
Right.
So, I mean, it's obvious to say, I would, it's not even in dispute, that this is not in character with the neighborhood, which is, that's just eight thirty G context in general.
Mm.
I get that. But, let me ask you this way. If you didn't have eight thirty G, and you were going strictly by our regulations, what could you, what would you be doing to maximize the property? You'd be able to build an apartment building of sorts, I believe, on this?
I don't think so, not without variances, because I, I'd have to seek a, I'd have to seek a change of zone, uh, to the, uh, the design residence district, and under your regulations,
Right, because this is very bad.
you have to have at least a, in this zone, which is, I have to have, uh, one acre, and I don't have that.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I mean, listen, I, I'm always very, I mean, I'm candid about eight dash thirty G. I, I, I get it. I think it's a, a very difficult debate that we're having in this state, because, I'm not gonna get into that tonight, but I, you know, we all know the feeling. We all understand there's a need for affordable housing, but we don't like to have affordable housing constructed in total derogation of our local regulations. I get it.
Yeah, I mean, do you have, can you knock off a floor, and can you knock off the under, knock every, not the, knock off the, under the building parking? Bring that down, you lose the parking spaces off, obviously, but then lock, knock off a floor, I mean-
I don't think the project would be feasible for us, again, and, and the, and the question for the commission is the standard of eight dash thirty G. Is there evidence here that if you don't knock off the floor, you're going to have a quantifiable probability of a significant, specific harm that outweighs the need for affordable housing? And I don't think you have that here.
No, you, you, and I get that. I mean, I guess the next question I have is, in the intervening two weeks, and you don't have to do this, and I'm not gonna take offense if you don't, is if, if any research, more research on your end can be done to lessen the units. And again, that's not something you need to do, that's-
We've looked at that carefully, so I don't wanna mislead the-
No, that's fine.
give them any false hope. I think, I don't think we can do that. I think what we can do, I, I, and I will spend some time when we meet again, is demonstrating that, yes, I understand that you mentioned out of character. By the same token, tho, those were the same arguments that we, we all wrestled with, you wrestled with, I heard, when we did the Maritz development. And it was out of character, was gonna destroy a, a wonderful Maritz Place neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, I welcome you to go back and look at what has happened to real estate values for those single-family homes on Maritz Place over the last two or three years, since that development, which you did approve, ha, ha, has been constructed and is now occupied. There hasn't been a detrimental impact, and I don't think there'd be a detrimental impact.
Yeah, I mean, there are other factors, market factors beyond that, though, but I, I understand your point. I mean, I'm, again, I, it's not an easy thing to begin with, with eight thirty G.
Commissioner Harrison?
I would just say, actually, I, and you mentioned, you've mentioned Maritz a few times. I used to be on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I heard a few appeals about Maritz. So, I heard about the eight thirty G development, how it did actually hinder a lot of their values. So, I'm not in total agreement with that. It's not material to, to your case of this application, but I just wanted to make that known. Um, I had another question, and I didn't look up the, the values of the current dwellings there. Would those be considered naturally affordable housing right now, as they are?
I, I don't know what natural affordable housing is. I, I don't know enough about it.
It's not deed restricted, obviously, they're not deed restricted.
No, I don't believe so.
Considered?
No, to my knowledge, they're not. No.
Commissioner Francis?
Maritz Place, though, is on Black Rock Turnpike, you know, built, so it's, this is one- and two-story homes, and it's not on a corner, and it's not on a busy street. It's in the, in the middle of the street. I mean, it's, it's really painful, and it's attractive, and four stories isn't that bad. But, it's caged and ranches and older colonials and-
I, I can't give you an answer beyond what the lawyer's answer has to be.
It would be a lot nicer if it were two stories, but I'm sure you're gonna say, can you repeat the question?
She's asking if it can be two stories.
I'm saying, I would do this with the neighborhood at this.
Commissioner Braun?
And so, um, I'm concerned about light, and I'll look at the lumens and see what I think of that, but I'm, I'm concerned with the light, especially if it angles towards, um, the natural, the wetland area, because that looks to me like a light-light corridor, and just reading through the wetlands permit, I, I'm shocked that it was approved, because the whole permit explains how it creates a significant adverse impact on the wetlands resource and the buffer area, which is supposed to protect the wetlands resource, and then it was approved even though there's no viable, feasible, prudent alternative presented that could be understood, 'cause I guess the quality of the paperwork was bad. So, um, I know the, the wetland statute in our regulations state that if you find an adverse impact-
I come to you tonight-
you cannot approve a permit unless there's no feasible, prudent alternative, and that's shocking, right?
I'm before, I, with all due respect.
Yeah.
I'm before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I come to you tonight with an inland wetlands permit in hand.
Right, and I, I have a question.
So, I mean, I'm happy to answer your questions, but I think second-guessing your colleagues on the inland wetlands agency-
I'm talking about a natural resource, which we are responsible for protecting.
Well, in the context of an eight dash thirty G application-
I believe we do have the jurisdictional authority to consider environmental impact, and, um, I'm concerned about the light. I don't know how high the lights go, do they-
Well, I think when you read, when you read-
Hold on, hold on, let her, hold on, stop, stop, stop.
When you read-
Commissioner Braun, just, I, ask your question, just let her ask the question.
Okay, yeah, uh, I'll look at the lighting plan in more detail.
Thank you.
That I see on my computer screen at home, but I would be concerned if the lighting aimed towards the wetlands resource, because according to the permit, um, a, a good chunk of the buffer area that protects the resource is eaten away by impervious surfaces, by the parking lot as well as the building. And there are wetlands and the buffer area, and they, that whole, whole thing is a natural resource. So, I'm a little bit concerned about the lighting plan, and to me, knocking off a floor could help alleviate that.
Hopefully, the lighting plan will be helpful in terms of that.
Any other ques, questions for Attorney Fallon? Again, this is initial presentation, so we have public comment, we'll get input as we've discussed, and we have his rebuttal. He's not completely off the hook. Uh, Commissioner McCosky.
I just have some concerns around, are the-
I know, I keep saying it.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a plan for that? Would that be managed by the company that's hired? I mean, there's a lot of garbage. How often would it be, um, taken away? Are the dumpsters large enough to hold the waste from that many minutes, and so forth?
We'll, we'll, rather than trying to give you something off the top of my head now.
Yeah.
As long as we're coming back two weeks, I, I'll make a note to make sure that we're prepared to give you a more detailed response to that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Could you go further with that? What, is there any way you could contain dumpsters in a shed?
Well, I'll let Mr. Rose come back up here, but I know, the dumpsters are enclosed, they have to be under the ricks.
Just fencing, yeah, right.
Huh?
They're enclosed, they're enclosed with fencing. I mean, it could be, I mean, enclosure is certainly an option. I hesitate putting them in a shed, inasmuch as when you put a top on this, then you have to be able to get the dumpster out. You're not, you're not, it's not big enough that I can take it with my forks, bring it up and help it.
Right, so it's like you can go in like this and pull it out.
They gotta pull it out, it, it-
It doesn't have to go out, yeah.
Like, it, the, the likelihood of something happening sort of increases.
Commissioner Francis?
Usually, we get those, we get chutes down the building, and it goes right into this trash room. The dump truck comes into the edge of the garage and takes it. They're, they're more internal, most of the apartment buildings we've seen.
Many apartment buildings are, are using trash chutes. Most of them that I've done have been in a more urban setting, because there's not as many options associated with where there would be a dumpster. It has, it has to be issued, it has to be in the building or in the garage area.
Can you speak up a little? Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Many of the projects I've done have been in, we've used garbage chutes in urban settings, you know, that you're constrained by streets, constrained by other buildings. You have parking underneath the building, 'cause that's the only place you can put it, and then you let it come down to that. And also, there's more number of units than forty, usually. So, there's a significant expense to a garbage chute going down into a building.
Yeah, the members of the commission-
And then we've gotten here, Beach Road, and Uncle Place, and they've all had chutes.
I don't remember.
And trucks, ice and stuff.
Okay.
Is that a consideration that, in, we're throwing out considerations, I would wonder if that would be a consideration, because I think that having dumpsters next to, um-
Homes.
someone's pool, for forty, for forty units, maybe that would be something that could be considered.
It, it certainly is- It, it certainly is an option we can discuss with the owner, and if you're going to lose a parking space, I guarantee that.
Yeah, okay, well, something
For the chutes, yeah, for the, for the, for the space where they contain the garbage.
I'm just thinking, like, the health of the surrounding
Down in the basement, somewhere.
That's not the fence, that's the fence there.
Going to lose something in this, in the lower level.
Look into it and see, we also, it's commonplace for, as best we can, to not have garbage, uh, garbage dumpsters near joining neighbors, especially in residences, so that's something we can revisit.
Yes.
Any other ma- questions, comments at this point? Again, we have public comment and then rebuttal. Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. So, that ends the initial presentation portion of this application, of this hearing. Uh, I will open it up to public comments. Um, if you wish to be heard, well, let's start with this. As I said, I'm not going to close public comments tonight, uh, to give the public and the commission time to absorb what the application, what was presented, uh, it gives us time to reach out to, at the very least, the Engineering Department and some others as well. Um, if you wish to be heard on the application tonight, you obviously have that opportunity. You have also the opportunity to, as I said, digest the materials, uh, to di- digest the hearing and speak two weeks from now, which is, what, May twenty-third. Um, I would ask not to ha- if at all possible, not to speak both tonight and the next night, if you can, if we can be efficient about our timing. Um, so I give you the opportunity to talk tonight. Uh, if you would like the additional time and just want to speak the next hearing, that is fine, too. I would, again, disfavor talking twice, I'm not going to prohibit it, I guess, but I, I think just out of Yes, so, you, public comment will be the first, when this is called, this item is called at the next meeting. As you saw, we went through minute, minutes, I guess we don't have really an executive session now, because there's nothing really outstanding, right? So we'd have minutes.
Well, it'll be the whole business, that's
Yeah, the whole business. Yeah, we may have some small items first, compliances, as you saw, and then when we got to public hearing, this would probably be first, right? This would be the only matter, so your public comment would be first right off the bat, so.
You're also welcome to submit anything else you want, in, um, email form, uh, before the, the next hearing.
Yes, that's, thank you, Commissioner Brown. We always read, uh, emails, um, we had a major application that lasted five nights, and we received thousands of pages from neighbors, and I can personally attest that I went through them all, and I'm confident the rest of my colleagues did as well. Um, again, submitting something in email and then reading it the next time, maybe not the most efficient use of our time, but, again, not something I'm going to prohibit in the, in the slightest. It's, so, I don't think there's anything else I need to add to that. Um, as you said, as we said, evidence is needed, uh, i- for eight thirty Gs, uh, either from yourself, experts, you have time now to do that. Uh, attorney, uh, retaining attorneys as well. So, having said all that, I'll open it up to in per- people in person. Does anybody wish to speak tonight? Come right up. No, no, it's okay. And to anybody who's joining us remotely or by phone, if you can please sign in in the chat feature, if you wish to be, wish to be heard. I'm going to go through the people in person and then open it up to the people joining us online or by phone. If you can just say your name and your address, um, and keep your comments remain, obviously, but go right ahead.
Sure. My name is John Patrow. I live at one eighty-one Berkeley Road, and I do have a prepared statement, which I did email to the commission. Uh, let me first say, first say
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I can't hear you. Can somebody get someone a mic?
He has it. You can just, it doesn't sound like it's on, though.
I can't hear the mic.
Like, normally, when you
Sorry about that.
No, no. Yeah, if we can, I don't know what that Commissioner Braun, if, if for whatever reason that mic's not working, is it possible just to get closer with Commissioner Ford not being here? I know it's not, it's a stopgap, at least, suggestion, if you don't mind. Thank you. Commissioner Harrison, how do you, how are you hearing him? I'll ask him to, I'll ask him. If you can just keep your voice up a little bit, please?
I'll try, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, so first, I'd like to thank the commission for taking the time to hear us. Uh, I did prepare a statement, and I have emailed it to the commission, so I, you'll, so you will have that on file. So I'm not going to read all of that tonight. I, I, I would like, I'm going to keep it very brief tonight. I would like to come back and speak at the next meeting. But there's, there's two points that, that I would like to make this evening. Uh, the first one is, uh, I'd like to thank the commissioner for noting that the wetlands, uh, is under litigation.
Yeah, yes.
So I, I want that, I appreciate the commissioner noting that for the record. Um, I also would like to, uh, recognize the commissioner that recused himself, uh, this evening due to his relationship with Mr. Papa George. Um, for the record, there is concern of a conflict of interest that Mr. Papa George, who is an official in the town of Fairfield, is also a principal of Berkeley LLC. So we've heard tonight about approvals from different organizations, and it, and, um, so I think there's, there's a concern that, that exists there. Um, again, I'm not going to read my entire presentation that I did submit via email. But based on, based on what we've learned tonight, I'll come back the next meeting and, and
That's fine.
Have those comments. Appreciate, appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask him a question?
Go right ahead.
What, um, commission was Mr. Papa George on, to your knowledge?
Uh, no, he, he works, he works in the, um, I, I don't have the exact title.
He has a position, does he have a position with Fairfield Public Schools?
Yes.
Okay, and the photographs, you submitted the photographs, the whole, with comments on each one?
Yes, I did.
And do you know what season or what timeframe these were taken?
They were taken over the last, uh, like, I prepared them for the last meeting and had taken
I see flowers.
Had taken them within two weeks of that, so it's in, it's in April twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, and that's the way the streets typically look?
That's, that's the way it looks. That's, that's the real, that's real life on Berkeley Road. That's me going back and forth to stop and shop, and those pictures are taken over the hood of my car.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, yep, come on up if you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the commission for hearing me and for
Drop something, in ca- underneath your desk, in case
Oh, thank you, more notes. Um, and for paying such close attention and your very legitimate questions and concerns. Oh, my name is Scott Paglia. I live on Bridgely Avenue, which is perpendicular to, uh, Berkeley, runs right into Berkeley. Uh, there were just a couple, I understand what Attorney Fallon has said with regards to eight dash thirty G. Um, despite not being a lawyer, I can still understand it, um, so feel free to cherry pick from my comments. Um, he wanted to get things on the record. I would just like to say some things, uh, so that they're on the record as well. Um, firstly, just to characterize, um, the neighborhood, there were a number of things said with the houses that are going to be, uh, they were saying duplexes. Now, I don't know what defines a duplex. They might be multifamily houses, but they are just houses. So for Commissioner Francis and the concern about the look, they are not, um, large monstrosities or anything, or side-by-sides. You drive by, you think it's a house. In addition, in speaking with, uh, Mr. Went, I don't want to mischaracterize our conversation, but from what, when he and I spoke a few weeks ago, the look of this property, because there have been comments made by you, can you get rid of floors? From the front, this building will look like it's four stories, but on both sides, it will look like it is, it is five stories. That it is actually five. So that goes to the, the look and everything. Um, I, as, uh, my previous neighbor has mentioned with his pictures, this is a neighborhood. I actually took a video three weeks ago. Uh, I was out on my bike, I'm out there on a daily basis, and I had no intention of it, but it was in the evening, and there are kids in the video. Uh, one girl is riding her bike, uh, a couple of kids are playing basketball. They have the movable basketball hoop on Berkeley Road. Um, so there is no visibility. Um, the character, again, going with the characterization of the street, it is a working-class neighborhood. There are a number of contractors. Uh, they park their vehicles on the street. It i- it does, it is essentially a one-way street, uh, because of the width and the vehicles parked on both sides. Um, so the vis- during the parking report, we, we heard, uh, there have been zero accidents. I don't, that's fine, but the, you're not comparing apples to apples. Uh, it doesn't take into consideration, really, a forty-unit building with the increased traffic. So you cannot predict what will or will not happen, you're just looking at the past. Um, to that point, I would like to share the Fairfield Board of Police Commissioners at their regular meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty-one, had before them, and I have copies of this for each of you, if you would like, I don't know how that works.
If you have something you want to submit to the record, please, let us give us
Can I pass them out?
Just give it to, uh, Commissioner Collins, and he'll send them down.
Okay, I think I have enough for everybody. I highlighted what is, uh, so this, again, this is the Fairfield Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, in the interest of the environment, it's a three-page report of their minutes. I only, uh, included for you, uh, commissioners, the one page that is, uh, relevant to this. It's, uh, TS number two, location, Berkeley Road, nature of request. There is a steep hill on Berkeley Road with low visibility and cars parked each side. Request a sign on top and bottom of hill, reading Hill Blocks View. This will, this would help all drivers to be more cautious when driving up and down and prevent potential accidents. Uh, it was presented by, uh, it goes on to, you can all read it. Uh, the bottom line is, it was approved unanimously, unanimously by that commission. So I wanted to point that out. In addition, in speaking with Mr. Went, um, where that sign is placed is, um, headed towards Melville, and th- this actually, per this commissioner, um, they had requested two signs that say Hill Blocks Views. There's only one as you're headed towards Melville. Um, but as you're headed towards that, Alton has been mentioned. It is right there. Now, Mr. Went and I went over it, and during the parking review, they talk about two hundred and eighty-seven feet of visibility. It was presented, and Mr. Fallon might go back and look at this, at the exact, the exact footage, um, it is approximately, depending on where the driveway is located, it is approximately three hundred feet. So it might be argued, well, it's two hundred and eighty-seven feet of visibility, and this is three hundred feet. The commissioners, the police, uh, decided that it was dangerous enough that they wanted to put up a sign to warn people, and it is still close enough, um, uh, for my, plus or minus a few feet, uh, to say two hundred and eighty-seven and three hundred is out of line of visibility. It is very dangerous. You mentioned you live in the area, you drive down there, you drive down there. The hill totally blocks the road. You have vehicles parked on both sides, um, and so, again, it's one way.
Thank you.
So, thank you for listening to me, and, uh, I know this is not an easy decision or easy to deal with, but thank you for what it is you do.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 what are you, oh.
Can you tell me the si- this police commissioner meeting in June of twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
That didn't have to do with this project, right?
No.
That had to do with something else. Where on the road in relation to this property, these three properties, was that issue? Up, away from Melville or Green, I don't know my geography that well.
No, it's all right. So as you come from Tunksis Hill,
Mm-hmm.
you hit the four-way stop, which is Greenfield, and, no, not Greenfield Hill, Greenfield Street. It's slightly different. Uh, Greenfield Street and, uh, Berkeley are perpendicular. Then you keep coming, uh, as you keep heading towards Melville, the, this project will be on the right-hand side, and then you hit Alton, and you proceed to, uh, this hill where the sign was put up. So it's approximately, the sign is approximately three hundred feet from where this driveway is proposed to be. And it was brought, it was, uh, before
Closer to Melville or closer to Greenfield?
Uh, closer to Melville.
Okay.
Right past Alton.
Okay, and they did put the sign up saying beware of hill or something like that?
Uh, yeah, Hill Blocks View.
Okay.
So the, uh, police commissioners recognized that there was a danger, and this, well, possibly not technically in the, uh, line of sight via the parking report, it's, I believe it's still relevant. Um, and again, with the, uh, what, what the whole commission brought up, whether there are vehicles in the report or not, I think it's very relevant. I know there's one contractor, he is a, uh, he's, I think he's a painter, and he has his cargo van on the exact same side of, uh, where this project is going to be, and that's where his house is, and that's where he parks his cargo van, right, right in the vicinity. Uh, that blocks your view, so I think it's relevant to, uh, to line of sight and whether, and this is on a daily, regular basis. It's not, uh, oh, it's the holidays or something and people are visiting. No, this is, this is what, is there one, uh, the majority of the houses are, um, have one-car driveways. So two family, two-car families, the other car has to come, has to park somewhere, so they park on the street. Does that help?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So how many, uh, I'd guess, I mean, uh, small children, elementary, uh, school, middle school children, that, you know, I said you said you noticed some plant on the street.
I just happen to be out there. I think some, some of the other people can, I'm
Yeah.
All right, well, just, it's hard to, it's hard for public comment to be away from the microphone.
I'm
I heard twenty in the, twenty to twenty-five in the, in the gallery, which is fine. If you can just think, remind, if you can just bring that, next time you come, uh, and speak, if you get, that can be brought up again, please.
Yes, uh, I'm around the corner, so in preparing for this, I just went out and I said, let me just take a video, maybe I can present it. I didn't realize we could email things and whatever. There was just a little girl going up the street on her bike, and these kids out in the street playing ball, so some, they'll bring it up next time.
And feel free to submit that e- uh, video to us.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did forget one thing. Um, feel free to come up. Uh, our curfew is at ten o'clock. Um, and considering that we, as I said, we'll be keeping this public comment open, we're going to be keeping that ten o'clock curfew, um, which I suspect you may remember from last time as, uh, but nonetheless. Attorney Fallon, I have a copy for you if you'd like it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ruth May, and I'm a Realtor, and also a district leader of District Five where this property is. Anyway, I, the of District Five where this property is. Anyway, I, the property, the street is thirty feet wide, little less. Cars do park on both sides of the street, and when that, when you are gonna come down the street, you can't, if another car's coming, you have to wait. And hopefully, there'll be some room for you to pull over, because if you can't, then you have to back out. If a fire truck is coming in that scenario, you have to wait for someone to back out. It's, it's, it's not, it's not good. Our neighborhood is the very poor side of town. It is very densely populated, and I can't imagine a four-story building in that area. I mean, from a, my Realtor perspective, sure, I'd love to see it there. I could, more things to sell. The inventory is so low, but realistically, we are overpopulated in that area of town. We can't absorb anything more. And you have the traffic from the car wash that they back up on certain days to have their cars washed, and there's the, uh, what is it, Aldi's, and there's the Tile Place. And so there's a lot of traffic that comes through. And as far as accidents, my own daughter-in-law had an accident there at the corner of Greenfield and, um, Berkeley Road. I'm having a problem with my allergies, so forgive my voice. I know it's hay fever season, I'm dying. Anyway, so I'm gonna make this very short. I, I really do oppose this. And one other thing that's very relevant is, I have the problem in my own home. Anytime there's new construction, the sewage system cannot absorb more su- more, uh, uh, buildings. When they do a new project in my neighborhood, I get a backup in my cellar of, from the sewers. It's, through the years, it's cost me a fortune. I condemned the bathroom down there. I've done everything I can, but the bath, the sink for the washing machine unfortunately is there, and I now have a backup again because three doors down from me, they put up a new house. It's just, goes on and on. But the, and the system, the sewer system there is old, um, so that while they are gonna put a bigger pipe and put it into the system that exists, it will not absorb the extra housing there. And that's my two cents, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't wanna move.
That's fine.
I'm a former R T M member from my district, 'cause I have a lot. However, to, um, and I didn't wanna speak at all as a police commissioner, I am a police commissioner. I was on that survey.
If you just, I'm sorry, can you just give your name?
Charlene Levo.
Thank you.
And I was on that survey. They had called us because of the situation where cars are on both sides of the road. This project is, will be exactly four houses down is where that hill goes up. We could not even believe there hasn't been an accident. I don't even travel that road, and a lot of people don't, because when you're coming up, cars are on both sides, you can't see who's coming in the opposite direction. And it's a miracle that nothing's happened. But I just wanna let you know.
Yeah, I heard you want, next time, which is fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, any member of the public wish to be heard this evening? It's ten of, commis- uh, Attorney Fallon, come on up.
I just wanna clarify one thing technically, just so everybody's at peace, because I, I checked it out. Lucas Papa George owns the property that's the subject of the application. He has a contract with Berkeley Road LLC to sell the property. He has no interest whatsoever in Berkeley Road LLC, um, whatsoever.
Okay.
Who's the applicant. And just so it's all good, he, Mr. Papa George has no position with the town of Fairfield. His brother, lots have the same name, his brothers often do, uh, is employed by the Board of Education. So just to clarify that, I just-
No, no, that's fine. I think that's, I think that's fair to put out there.
So, and, so no one has to worry that there's any nefarious activity going on in town hall. Mr. Papa George's brother works for the Board of Education. He has no interest in the Berkeley Road property. That's owned exclusively by Lucas. Lucas is selling the property to Berkeley Road LLC, and he has no interest in Berkeley Road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know. Is anybody in chat?
Nobody indicated.
Okay. Tempted to call it now, just 'cause it's ten of, well, eight, seven of. I don't get, I get the sense that people wanna wait till next time, which I think is fair and prudent. I'm getting nods of the head out there in the gallery. Um, so why don't we, why don't we adjourn? Or we'll wait. Okay, yeah, is that you, Ms. Harrigan? Okay, sorry, I'm reading what's on the, what's, um, the screen. Why don't we adjourn for the evening? This app, the application remains open, public comment remains open, I, but I'm closing, adjourning the hearing for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good night. Drive safe. Uh, Attorney Fallon?
Forty-seven people.
Attorney Fallon, stand here.
I go, oh, thank you, thank you.
We had an extra, so maybe one less trip.